Good evening, everyone. Quiet in the chambers, please. I am going to call the regular council meeting to order. Quiet in the chamber. Yeah, it seems to be on. Could I ask that we have some quiet in the chambers so that we can conduct the business of council? Calling the meeting to order. Council looking for the adoption of minutes.
I'll move the special minutes of July 10, 2017, to be adopted.
Second. All those in favor. Opposed?
Carried.
Carried.
I'll move the minutes of July 10, 2017, to be received.
Second.
All those in favor. Opposed? Carried.
And I'll move the regular land use July 10, 2017, to be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor. Opposed? Carried.
And I'll move the regular council public hearing July 10 to be received and adopted.
Thank you all.
Second.
Second, or thank you. All those in favor. Opposed? And that is carried. Before we get into the public hearing portion, could I have quiet, please, in the chamber? Thank you for respecting the business of council. Before we head into the public hearing portion of the agenda this evening, I would ask council's indulgence to move forward corporate report number R.161, which I believe is of interest to many people in the chamber this evening, and that is the one regarding a process that we would undertake relative to Hawthorne Park.
I'll move that report forward.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, or all those in favor. Opposed? And thank you for that, council. I think it's important to clarify immediately the bylaw in question, then that it is specific only to Hawthorne Park, and whatever the outcome of the alternative approval process, the result will only affect Hawthorne Park. And I want to ask our Mr. Engineer, you're the catalyst for this, so I am going to ask you to give a very brief overview, and I would ask you, please, to keep it brief since we have a lot on the agenda this evening. But I think there is some misinformation around where this road is going to be, and I would like you to clarify that, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I will put up a few slides that may help clarify some of this information. So the 105 corridor project that we're looking at will extend from 138th Street in an east-west direction through the base of Hawthorne Park out to 150th Street. The alignment, and this was originally introduced in the late 1980s, and in the 1987 OCP, it was identified as a corridor to ensure connection in east-west direction for both for transportation issues, for cycle pedestrian and motor vehicle.
And just for clarification, has that changed at all in 30 years?
Madam Mayor, yes, the alignment was in a more northernly location.
Cutting through the park at one time?
Where I've indicated, and which is an area which is very close to two ponds that are currently there. And, excuse me, as the lowered alignments were refined, it was looked at a place where we could go that would have less environmental impact and not hit so many sensitive lands, sensitive properties. So the alignment now shows that it's basically along the southern border of much of the area. The road is needed for traffic circulation in the neighborhood, is going to provide additional access to the park, and road improvements for pedestrian and cycle. The bylaw in question is related to a 1979 initiative that had reserved six parcels for Hawthorne Park, and it's only for these six parcels that this bylaw is introduced for consideration. The idea is through an alternative approval process, which adheres to the community charter, that bylaw, reserve bylaw, would be removed, and therefore it would allow two things to happen. The bylaw would have to be removed for putting utilities in that corridor, sanitary, water, et cetera. It also would be required to be removed to put a road into that location. So for either of those uses, the bylaw has to be removed. Currently, the park is 55 acres, and the additional work that we're including will have an impact on the overall size, but we are going to acquire five additional properties which would increase the area by one acre.
By one acre, sorry, for clarification, by one acre more in the park, or by one acre more than that which is being removed for the southern road?
The impact of the road is approximately four acres, and we're acquiring five acres of land, so the net increase to the park would be one acre.
Okay, thank you.
The net increase would also be approximately 200 additional trees.
Thank you.
As you can see on the sketch on the bottom, 142nd Street, which was shown at the public meeting as a connection from 104th up to 105, has been removed, and that has allowed us to save more of the park and not have an effect on it. We've also narrowed the road to just two lanes, excluding any parking through the park on the roadside, and we've also added separate bike lanes and sidewalks for accessibility. We're also putting in street lighting and pedestrian lighting, and we hope that that will have the effect, too, of increasing the overall accessibility. So like I mentioned, the net increase of one acre in the park, an additional 200 trees will be added to the park. 142nd Street connection has been removed. The road corridor has been narrowed, and we also have a new salmon rearing habitat just north of the proposed road. And relocation of the parking lot that exists and the roadway to get to that parking lot will actually allow more green space to be activated. That parking lot then will be on 144th Street, and there'll be no roadway except off 144 to the parking lot, and new walking trails will also be established.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Engineer. So the report before council is to activate a public process. It is not to make a decision, is activate a process by which you're saying is required whether we limit it to utilities or we limit it to utilities plus roadway?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. On that clarification, could I have a recommendation of council?
Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to move corporate report R.161, the changes to the reserved parkland in Hawthorne Road and Park. I do have some comments.
Would you like to speak to it, councillor? Let's get it second and first.
Second.
Okay, councillor Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, earlier this afternoon, we did have a delegation that did come to speak to this particular report and the concerns. I just really wanted to reiterate that there were some concerns that made me want to think about what that ultimate road width potentially could be or not be. I think certainly, I think that the folks that went out to stake the properties in terms of the land surveyors, I'm sure that those land-serving pins really did identify those city properties, but certainly I think that the context that was lost in that conversation is to look at what that possible road profile potentially could be in the future in terms of the lands that are being impacted. And again, Madam Mayor, we're just starting the process in terms of what may be required in the future, but certainly I think what I'd be asking staff for is some context in terms of what that profile may look like, how that profile would impact the neighboring properties, the adjacent properties. And I know we've got a number of profiles that we use in terms of city widths, in terms of roads, networks, including the boulevard, so I'm really interested in seeing what that ultimate profile may look like and what impacts, if any, they would have on the neighboring properties.
Thank you, councillor Gill, and we'll take that as a direction to staff that if that process concludes prior to any other report coming to council, we'd like an overlay of exactly where those properties, because I think many on council were interested in that. So thank you, councillor Gill. Councillor Hayne, you're up next.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and certainly as Chair of Parks and Recreation, it's very difficult. This whole process is very difficult, but given as our city engineer has stated that we need to go through this process even to just put servicing through there, which we need to get the servicing off of 104, I would be reluctantly supportive of this process. But I would like to point out that, you know, we have over 7,000 acres of parks in this city. We spend upwards of $20 million a year on parks, on park acquisition, and so I feel comfortable as Chair of Parks and Recreation that we do place parks very high on our list of priorities in this city, and for good reason. And when these kind of conflicts come along where for infrastructure and transportation and servicing come into contact with parks, then we have to look at it very carefully. So I think that allowing this process to take place, we'll see where we're at, and we'll come back later in the fall.
Thank you, councillor, for your comments. It is indeed the job of Solomon. Councillor LeFrank.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to just say, repeat a lot of what councillor Hayne has said, and it's very difficult to take away from green space, and I know that we do tend to overcompensate. This is my neighborhood, and many of you are my neighbors. I live at around 105A and 148th, and so that road is going directly behind my home. So I will be sharing the burden with you of this new road, but I do support this, and I know that as a member of the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, I know how critical it is to have these east-west connectors in Surrey, and how, because we have so many parks, many of them go through parkland, and I think that we're blessed with those parks. And so for that reason, I'm going to be supporting this corporate report.
Councillor Villanueva.
Well, thank you very much. I too am supporting the report, particularly with the knowledge is that we have to go through the process in order to move the services that are necessary in the city. And the parks were established in the 70s and 80s before we had the kind of densification that we have now, so it's certainly a process that we have to go through, and I respect the public process, and we're going to ensure that the process is open and transparent and fair, and I trust that that process will give people confidence that we'll make the right decisions based on many facts that we have to consider. And for example, we did go through a public consultation as we were discussing this project earlier, and had some feedback originally on the project, and as Deb Jack pointed out through her submission last time, we discussed that the 142nd, 142 connector wasn't necessary, and we have removed that. So I have faith in the public consultation process. I admire the work the community has done, coming together, expressing their concerns, and I realize this is not unusual in a city that's been growing. I've been on the council since the early 1990s when Fleet was entirely acreage property, and so we've seen many, many changes in the city, but I think we work hard to try to resolve issues and to ensure that we create the best possible quality of life in many different aspects for families living in the city. So I'll support the initial process as we go through, and I have faith that people will put their mark in what they believe and will help to make those choices.
Thank you for your comments, councillor Villanueva, and I think that it, no disruption, please, in the council chamber. I really do want to thank the delegation that came forward this afternoon. I think they put a lot of work into their presentation and certainly gave pause to council relative to some of the impacts that the roadway would make on property. So we are attuned to hearing and to listening to that, and the process will reveal itself with further reports coming forward. So councillor Villanueva, did you have something to add?
I have a question. I have a question of staff, just for clarification for the community, because for us, it was made clear that to remove services at all, that we have to go through the bylaw process, that even though they're underground, we're making an impact on the park, and so I'm wondering if Mr. Smith could confer.
Councillor Villanueva, through the mayor, we have confirmed with legal counsel that for us to place utilities in through the park on those six effective properties, we would have to remove the bylaw to do that, as we would if we wanted to build a road.
Same process.
The same process.
Thank you.
It's necessary for us to do it legally, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. City Solicitor, I don't usually get a buzz from you.
I was just going to confirm that was the advice provided.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, moving forward to the public hearing portion of the agenda, Madam Clerk, B.1. B.1.
The first bylaw is zoning amendment by law 19315. The address is 5927 and 5957 140th Street.
No, this is not a public, no. You can ask the clerk post-meeting for, before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The applicants.
Thank you.
Remember, we can pick the whole bunch up.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'm going to call a recess. Calling a recess. Okay. Do you all think you should call a recess and go outside? Okay. Madam Clerk, we'll give five minutes to clear the chamber. No, he'll clear it. Okay. Remember the last time we got that? Yes.
So the applicants on bylaw 19315 are Iqbal, Parmajit, Yuvaraj, Singira, and Linda Miller. The applicants are seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to single-family residential nine, single-family residential 13, and single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the site into seven single-family lots, four RF9 and three RF13, and one remnant lot, which is an RF, for future consolidation with the property to the north at 1398060th Avenue. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the lot from four proposed lots three and four in order to accommodate the layout of proposed 59A Avenue.
We have no one signed up to speak to the bylaw. We have, however, two persons in support of the bylaw, not wishing to speak, and no correspondents on table. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number one this evening? Deb?
Good evening, Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners. I'd like to draw your attention, your honor and council members. This property starts off with a total of 139 trees, of which 110 are going to be killed off, leaving 29. The required replacements are 197, but there's only going to be 17, leaving a deficit of 180. The biodiversity value of that, the services provided to the city, I couldn't even begin to be able to figure out how to measure. They'd be colossal. What I'm speaking here to is the fact that the proponent has opted to pay compensation to the city, because that's really what it is, on a per-acreage basis, as opposed to the per-tree basis. And we don't, of course, I certainly don't have access to delineation of all of the trees, the sizes thereof, et cetera, that are going to be taken down. So the report advises that the Green City Fund will be $37,000, but if it were done on a per-capita, per-tree basis, it would be $35,000, sorry, the other way around, it would be $72,000 all told. So that I think it may possibly be construed that the proponents do not necessarily comply with Surrey's vision, which is to be, as stated in the charter, a thriving, green, inclusive city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Deb. Anyone else wishing to speak to the first bylaw this evening? This is the last call. Madam Clerk, next bylaw, please.
Is land use contract number 150 discharge bylaw number 19321, and zoning amendment bylaw number 19322. The address is 80538063 128th Street, 12697 12743, and 12779 80th Avenue, as well as 12725 80th Avenue. The applicant is KB Properties Incorporated and All Owners in Stratup Plan BCS 2004. The applicants are seeking to discharge the land use contract 150 from the property in order to allow underlying light-impact industrial zone to come into effect and rezone the property from light-impact industrial and comprehensive development by law 14640 to comprehensive development. The applicants are proposing to develop eight new buildings and retain one existing building in phases as part of retail, office, service, and cultural-commercial development in the Central Newton Cultural Commercial District. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the minimum number of parking spaces from 2,168 to 1,054 in order to accommodate the site layout.
We have one piece of correspondence on table in support of this bylaw, and no one signed up for speaking or not speaking relative to this bylaw. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the second bylaw on the agenda this evening? Last call. Madam Clerk, the next bylaw, please.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 19316. The address is 1.
One moment, please, Madam Clerk. I didn't see councillor Gill's mic on.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, in terms of the application number two, I really wanted to have the applicant come forward and speak to the DVP for the parking. I know that in our land use meeting two weeks ago, we had asked the applicant to come forward and help us with the math in terms of the DVP that's going to be required for the parking to support both the banquet hall and the businesses. The context that I'm referring, the information to really is that how is that facility going to operate with the banquet hall to ensure that we don't have the similar issues that we do amongst other plazas throughout Surrey? So the idea was to figure out how to put a restricted covenant on some of the operations to restrict some of the activities.
Commercial activities.
Right.
Is the applicant in the audience this evening for bylaw two? Or his agent, or her agent?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councillors. My name is Nirbar Berdi. I'm the architect for the job. My address is 11672.
Could you just move the mic up a little closer, sir, so we can hear you a little better?
My name is Nirbar Berdi. I'm the architect for the project, and my address is 11672 99th Avenue, sorry. I sent to the clerk's office today a synopsis of the whole project. It's a two-page letter, and if there are any questions, I'd be quite happy to answer any questions on that one.
Is that the letter we have on table here? So the question from councillor, and that which was of interest to this council, was the retail shopping and the other commercial businesses, and how you would ensure that those were not open at the same time that the banquet hall was in use.
When we worked with the planning department, it was agreed that businesses would not be operational in the evening hours, when the banquet hall starts operation for 7 to 12 o'clock or something. And the offices, as well as the medical-dental buildings, they operate from 9 to 3 or 4 o'clock, and so you have a good window between the usages to have the banquet halls parking being resolved on that issue.
Okay, councillor, does that satisfy you?
Madam Mayor, just for. Madam Mayor, just for purposes of formal record, I just want to ask the applicant, if I may, should it be deemed necessary to put a restricted covenant to limit the operations? You're prepared to do that on whether it's the banquet hall or whether it's the other commercial activities on the site?
Yes, ma'am. We are prepared to do that.
Thank you. That was my question.
That's important. Thank you. Okay, council? Moving on then, Madam Clerk, to number three.
Thank you.
Number three is zoning amendment bylaw number 19316. The address is 18115 Clayton Hill Drive. The applicant is Said Nakke Makar Zamina. The applicants are seeking to rezone the property from half-acre residential to single-family residential, and are proposing to subdivide the property into two single-family lots and dedicate a portion along the west side of the proposed lot one to accommodate the existing walkway.
We have two pieces of correspondence on table, opposed to the application regarding lack of on-street parking and re-driveway placement, but we have no one signed up to speak to bylaw number three. Anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? Last call. Madam Clerk, the next bylaw, please.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 19319. The addresses are 19342 and 19372 72nd Avenue. The applicant is Ecom 68 Project Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to comprehensive development. The applicant is proposing to develop 52 townhouse units.
There is no one signed up to speak to this, nor is there anyone, there's one piece of correspondence on table. Anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number four?
Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners. This site will start off with 93 significant trees. They're going to kill off 90 with a retention of three. And there is an error, by the way, in the report. The categories that list about the trees indicates that there'll be $2,000 contributed to the Green City Fund. Indeed, it's 800. There is a correction in the body of the report, but the form shows incorrect number. We don't have a layout of trees, so we don't know if these three are the best or the most significant of the trees, the 93, all told. And when you have that kind of a situation, there is a concern about the surrounding area for the long-term survival of those trees, and I'll draw your attention to a submission we made some years ago in the financial report, or submission to financial committee, which indicated that there is a jurisdiction, one that we've found so far in the United States, that monitors all of those trees that have been retained through development process such as this, and they monitor them every two years because they understand that the intention of retaining those trees that are significant to the community is a retention in perpetuity. So I draw that to your attention. We certainly don't do that. Indeed, I have no idea what the long-term retention rate is of the trees that are indicated as worthy of retention in the developments.
Well, generally, though, Deb, if they're worthy of retention, they are of a particular size, and in order to remove a tree of a particular size, you have to have a permit. So as that measures retention, it would be part of that process.
Well, I understand that fully, and I certainly know that the trees that we retain as a city are 12 inches in diameter and greater. We don't differentiate in terms of the size, so it's the same valuation for three feet wide as it is for 12 inches. The issue is the specificity of what ratio of the trees that we are setting aside as a city in these exercises and what the long-term survival of those are. Certainly, there is a record of all the trees that get permits to be cut down, but we don't know if those are the ones deriving from developments or other. are the ones deriving from developments or other.
Well, they're private lands. Anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw four this evening? Madam Clerk, next bylaw, please.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 19323. The address is 18755 54th Avenue. The applicant is 1073893 BC Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to comprehensive development. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into four small suburban lots.
We have two pieces of correspondence on table relative to this bylaw in opposition, and we have one person signed up not wishing to speak in opposition, and one person wishing to speak, and I'm going to guess that's you, Linda.
Yes, it is, Linda.
Linda Lobley, good evening.
I'm with the Y. Yeah, I can hand these for people to look at for the plan.
Your address, please, for the clerk.
It's 18775 54th Avenue.
Thank you.
When our first family moved to my address now, 42 years ago, the area west of 188th Street was mostly zoned one-acre lots. Through subsequent years, this progressed, or rather regressed, to half-acre net lots and then to half-acre gross lots south of 54th Avenue. The one-acre lot in question to be developed with four houses will end up as one-quarter gross lots with a substantial part of the property used as road access. Most neighbors bought in the area under the assumption that it was zoned half-acre lots. The integrity of the neighborhood will be jeopardized if this one acre has four houses built on it. This kind of development was slated east of 188th Street. Are the developers controlling the planning department in Surrey?
Yeah.
Changing the rules partway through the development of an area is not fair to those who have already settled in that neighborhood. Two houses would be preferable for this development, but three houses instead of four would probably be acceptable to the neighbors. Please note the comparisons of the three versus four in the attachment. Well, there's the maps. The whole area--oh, before that, trees again. We have substantial trees on our property, Douglas firs, et cetera. But we also have a number of trees between our property and that neighboring acre. And we are very concerned with the impact on the trees between the subject property and our own. This has already happened with development north of our property where it did impact some of our trees. On closing, I would like to say the whole area west from 184th Street, east to 192nd Street, south from Highway 10 to the industrial land adjacent to the railway tracks, is being crammed with housing that has no infrastructure. All residents have to drive for schools and shopping. However, there is a token church. Where is the community planning purported by the City of Surrey? It's certainly not in this area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw five? Come forward, sir.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Roger Jawanda from City West Consulting. We're the agents for this project. The tree issue, we're retaining the trees along the east property line, and also some additional trees along the north property line. We're working with city staff on that, and we've changed the layout to increase the lot size, the northern lot, to be able to retain probably about seven or eight additional trees. And there will be no change along the east property line. In respect to the size of the lots, there was this application that went through final a couple of years ago just to the north, and our proposal here is consistent with that. Basically, we're proposing similar-sized lots and widths and et cetera. It also provides a good transition from larger lots to the west and RF lots to the east. And also, there are some smaller lots along the south side of 54th Avenue as well. If there's any questions, I could answer.
I see no questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw five? Madam Clerk, next bylaw, please.
Next bylaw is official community plan amendment bylaw 19328, zoning amendment bylaw 19329, and zoning amendment bylaw 19330. The address is 17015 Fraser Highway. The applicant is 1075579 BC Limited. The applicant is seeking to redesignate a portion of the site from suburban to urban and rezone the site from golf course to comprehensive development and one-acre residential. The applicant is proposing to develop 98 townhouse units on the northwest portion and retain a remnant lot on the southeast portion for future consolidation with the property to the southeast at 17071 Fraser Highway.
We have 27 letters on table in opposition to this bylaw, and we had 13 people signed up not wishing to speak. All of them are against, and three people signed up wishing to speak to the bylaw. Ray Thorpe is up first.
Thank you very much.
Address for the clerk, please.
Definitely. Ray Thorpe, Unit 85, 7780, 170th Street, Surrey. Don't do this very often. I need a deep breath, okay? Okay, we are not in favor of the development at 17015 because of road access. This proposal is very dangerous with only, or with one in-and-out proposed road to the complex off the Fraser Highway. Okay, traveling east down the hill on the Fraser Highway, it is very dangerous. Turning right onto 170th off the Fraser Highway. It is--okay. So the other thing is, when you are making a right turn off of 170th onto the Fraser Highway, you often have to travel at a speed from zero to 100, or you will be run over. Traveling west on the Fraser Highway, cars exceed the posted speed limit, and I have some concerns about turning in or out of 17015. Okay, 17015 has only one in-and-out driveway located on the busy section of the Fraser Highway. Even though the so-called entrance to the Fraser Highway is temporary, the approximate time is three years. When the previous, or when the driving range where the development is being done was in operation at the same location, it was noted that many, on many occasions, cars turned left into the turn bay heading towards 176th. I feel that road access should not be on the Fraser Highway. Is there no way that it could be done somewhere off of 80th? Notice that Fleetwood Rise Development has access from the back off of 164th, not on the busy Fraser Highway. Okay, because Phase One and Phase Two are closely linked, we have concerns with the proposed Bear Creek Connector Road that will travel from 172nd at 80th to the Fraser Highway with the proposed traffic light. And I ask the question, where will this road go beyond that traffic light? Hopefully not behind the townhouses on the golf course. Just as a little side note, noticed in the complex, the new complex, our complex across the street from it has 96 units, 40 single garage, 56 double. Noting the new complex at 17015 has 98 units, all double garage. Will this create more traffic? Anyway, those are my concerns, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Mr. Thorpe. I appreciate that. Don Jarvis is next speaker on our list.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm going to be very brief. I've talked with Helen Chan today, and she explained that the east-west connector was actually put on our notice by mistake, and that it wasn't to be there. But she didn't say it would never be there, and that's the concern that we have. And I understood that we should only be talking about Phase One today, but I see in the agenda that the note says, "The applicant is proposing to develop 98 townhouse units on the northwest portion and retain a remnant lot on the southeast portion for future consolidation with the property to the southeast at 17071 Fraser Highway." So my question is, what provision is there to meet these traffic demands as a result of these two developments?
I think that a lot of people here this evening are probably concerned about that east-west road. Counselor Hayne, did you have a question relative to that as well?
Not so much the east-west road, because that could be discussed another time. But I did want staff, and maybe they can talk about it afterwards when this is done, staff to explain the ingress and egress on Fraser Highway, because on the maps, it gets very pixelated, and it's pretty hard to see. So I'd like to further explanation on that.
Perhaps it would be helpful if we had that access and egress up on the screen, and then we could actually clarify for the public as well that east-west confusion that went out with the notification of this application? Mr. Engineer?
Madam Mayor. As part of this application, there is one access off of Fraser Highway. It's noted where the pen is pointing. That access will be restricted to right-in, right-out only. Until the light rail transit is constructed along Fraser Highway, there is provision for an interim left turn into the site. That provides the access for this Phase One portion of the development. When Phase Two portion of the development proceeds, that is just to the east, which is a remnant portion of the current application site, as well as the lot to the east, there will be access provided through a dedicated roadway between the two blocks of the buildings. That portion of that roadway will connect into what we have been calling the east-west connector or the Bear Creek Connector. That portion of the road will connect from 80th Avenue to Fraser Highway. That will provide an alternate access for Phase One townhouse units, as well as Phase Two townhouse units. And subject to the timing of those applications proceeding and the timing of the LRT, we will determine whether signals are appropriate at 80th as well as at Fraser Highway, and that's also predicated on securing rights of ways to 80th Avenue.
Counselor Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Engineer, could you perhaps elaborate on that road network that possibly may be coming into fruition to the south of the site? They'll be on the other side of Fraser Highway.
Counselor Gill, the Bear Creek Connector, fortunately, it's a very light blue line on the screen. It's at 172nd Street and 80th Avenue, and it goes west along that blue line to 140th and about the 8200 block of 140th Street. This road alignment is shown on our major road allowance map as part of our subdivision and development bylaw. It is currently noted as a transportation corridor only. The intended use for this corridor has not been fully determined. It could range from pedestrian access to cycling access to potentially an arterial road. The portion south of Fraser Highway and to the west of 140th is going to be a long-term strategy. There's lots of consultation that will be required, lots of public engagement, as well as securing all the necessary road allowances. Our focus right now is the portion between Fraser Highway and 80th. That portion of roadway is essential to improving the traffic flow within the area, primarily along 80th Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your comments, Mr. Jarvis. Benega Marcos?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Benega Marcos, and I'm resident at Unit 72, 7848, 170th. And I'm here to speak in opposition to this proposal. My concerns are mainly with off-site and the area of transportation. So I would appreciate if we could bring L1 Plan, the first site layout plan, so that I can-
The map back up again?
Yes, please, yeah.
Mr. Planner. Could you just speak a little closer to the mic piece as well?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what I would like to share with you, Madam Mayor, is that it is very important, as we consider this application, that we also look at Phase Two, because Phase Two and Phase One, they seem to be very much interconnected because of the proposed shared driveway access. My main concern with regards to the left turn bay, and that is because in one hand, we've got Fraser Highway, which is a major transit corridor, and also it's temporary. So if it's subject to Phase Two, and Phase Two does not go through, and the light rail train comes before, what do we do? And the second thing is, this development, I think there are about 196 plus 20, about 200 cars. If you multiply that twice, you've got about 400. In my view, that's very significant, given that Fraser Highway is a very steep grade. You've got about six meters, six percent grade, and perhaps the advanced warning T-intersection, which is located about 200 meters way high up, seems to articulate the potential for accident, you know, in case this proposal goes with the left turn bay. So that's one. The second thing is, I think we need to look at closely in terms of securing access from 80th Ave. I'm not quite sure if the applicant has tried to expropriate that land, but in my view, it doesn't even have to be the whole. A portion of it, you know, could be adequate. If you look at that driveway, if you extend that one, I think just a portion of it should be able to, if you could look into securing that access from 8th Ave, that would be appreciated. The other item is, the proposed development does not seem to provide a pedestrian walkway connectivity between 80th Ave and Fraser Highway. So I'm not quite sure if that has been requested from the developer as well. The other item is, I know this may not be a big deal, but there is no children playground area that's being provided, given- playground area that's being provided, given the number of bedrooms and units. Perhaps maybe that's something that can be considered. When I compare with our Strata, we do have a playground area and a lot of residents, they take comfort out of it, so maybe that can be something that can be imitated. Well, thank you so much for that presentation.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other persons wishing to speak to Bylaw Six? Ma'am?
Good evening, Council. My name is Carrie Larmont. I am a recent influx to Surrey just as of three weeks ago, and I'm here to present a letter and a petition to council on behalf of Dr. Christine Deckert, who could not be here tonight. I was wondering if I could submit my petition to the council.
Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Could you give it to the clerk? Thank you.
I do believe she did submit the letter by email, but we would like to read it for our voices to be heard for those living on our street. For the record, our address, 7956 170A Street. To whom it may concern, the proposed development at 17015 Fraser Highway, file number 7916048500. Dr. Christine Deckert, "I am a resident and homeowner at the above address, living within 100 meters of the proposed development. I'm writing to express my opinion, my opposition to the plan. Zoning change and development of the land in question will have a severe impact on my ability to benefit from and enjoy my property, as well as affecting my property value. The properties developed along 170A Street, south of 180th Avenue, were situated specifically to enjoy a view over the agricultural land and valley on both sides of 176th Street. At the time of purchase, this view appeared protected based on there being a commercial recreation zone adjacent to the properties, with only a single undeveloped lot between that and the agricultural zone covering the valley. This was a specific feature of these properties and was taken into account by all property owners along this section of the street at their time of purchase. As well, privacy in the backyards was assured for this same reason. Buyers paid a premium for this feature and it is reasonable, it is reasonable to expect that zoning is a reliable reason for making decisions. Allowing housing development in this area completely eliminates the privacy of our backyards, as well as all the houses along the street have a large deck expected to be a major living space on the second story at the back. Because of the decline of the land along houses and any development behind, lays these living areas open to the view of many houses that would lie within 12 feet of the property line at the back of the lot. As a result of these concerns, I would expect considerable loss of enjoyment of my property. As well, I anticipate a loss of value of my land, approximately $50,000 to $75,000, based on the loss of privacy and loss of view. Should the change of zoning from commercial recreation zone be approved in spite of these concerns, I feel that a comprehensive development zone is not appropriate one for this site. I do state several reasons as follows. The increased densification produced by townhouses are not in keeping with the context of the rest of the neighborhood. Number two, there are no easily accessible amenities to the site. The closest stores of any kind are at 160 Fraser Highway, with the exception of one gas station and a fruit store, not within any walking distance. It's not a suitable neighborhood for walking. The only egress from the property, from the proposed development is onto Fraser Highway, a busy provincial highway with no sidewalks for approximately 500 meters. A high-density housing in this area will put increased stress not only on the schools that serve this area, but as are the townhouses advertised as three-bedroom houses. So this would mean a possible 200 or more children attending this school, which is not a realistic number. There is no alternative school for these anticipated children, as this area lies at the edge of the residential land in this area. There is not sufficient parking in this area for dense housing. I personally find this, as I came to Surrey with one vehicle and I have to walk almost a block to our house because there is no parking available. There, even in our driveways, there's room for one vehicle and I park on the edge of a bush, which the sap drips down from a tree, ruining the paint job on my car. So I do have to sacrifice that and walk myself and the children to my car back and forth. So parking is definitely an issue. The current commercial recreation zone acts as a buffer at the interface between developed and agricultural land. Increased density and housing directly at the boundary will have an adverse effect on the agricultural land ecosystem that has developed, including water runoff and wildlife habitat. Eagles, hawks, owls, coyotes, and songbirds are already living directly beside the current driving range that is there. A housing development will degrade their environment and force them to increasingly less livable spaces. Last and not least, there are no green spaces or parks accessible to this area. It's an isolated enclave based on its single access onto Fraser Highway. Even the full development is carried through, which would presumably allow access to 80th Avenue. There are no sidewalks along this stretch of the road and is quite dangerous for walking. There is no safe pedestrian crossing on 80th Avenue at any place between 160th and 176th Street. In summary, I would request that the proposed zoning change from commercial recreation zone to a comprehensive development zone be denied. In the event that a change from a commercial recreation zone is nevertheless considered, I would urge that only single-family, low-density housing be considered. Respectfully, Christine Deckert. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and we do have Dr. Deckert's letter on file. Anyone else wishing to speak to Bylaw Number Six? Anyone else? Madam Clerk, next bylaw. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk, unless there was someone else I couldn't hear. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, so my name is Jennifer Tong. I live at unit number 29 at 7848 170th Street. I haven't really planned out much of what I was going to say because I, a lot of people have already said it, but one thing that I was concerned about with this complex is it's proposed to be, I guess, for older people since they don't have any playgrounds, but I don't see that as a realistic expectation, given that they're three-bedroom units and the lack of availability for such affordable housing in Surrey is really, it's likely that these are going to be family units, which means that these kids aren't going to have anywhere to play. And where are they going to go to school? And where, how are they going to get to school? As Dr. Deckert said, there's no sidewalks on 80th Street, there's no sidewalks on that side of Fraser Highway, and there's no way for them to run across the highway to get to the sidewalks. I just don't see this proposal in its current state as realistic. So I'm just wondering what the considerations are for that, if you have any information on that.
No, the information we have is it's primarily Masters on the Main, and I believe you would be correct in assuming that that's for those that are downsizing or moving out of single-family homes and maybe of a particular age. I know I'm in a townhouse unit that's, that is geared that way, and that's generally what happens with the Masters on the Main.
I would propose that they consider an age restriction if that's the case, because I don't think that it's likely that that is going to be solely elderly people or retired people that are moving into those units.
Counselor Starchack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just, I'm looking in the report and I am actually, it looks like, so maybe staff can confirm that the outdoor amenity space is in excess of what the bylaw requires?
Okay, so that means what? Sorry, I don't speak legalese. I'm asking, I don't, I don't understand.
And I'm sure we'll get our answer.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were answering.
Don't we weren't asking? Put you on the spot for that, no.
Yes, Madam Mayor, through you to Counselor Starchack. The zoning bylaw requires 3,100 square feet of outdoor amenity space and 3,600 square feet is proposed, so it's over the requirement.
But what does that mean? Is it like grassy area or is there a park there? I don't understand.
Madam Mayor, currently, the outdoor amenity space is made up of some community garden plots, a botchy pit, and some passive outdoor space.
I would propose that there be an age restriction. Thank you.
Sounds like that would be appropriate. Anyone else wishing to... Could I just ask you? I'm going to ask you to hold your applause in the council chambers. It's really not appropriate, and I'm trying to get through everyone this evening and give everyone a fair chance to say, make their comments known, so I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Name and address, please.
My name is Maciej Dembek from Barnett Dembek Architects, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant regarding some of the concerns that have been raised. I'll start with the onsite amenity space. Like the planner has explained, there is indeed some amenity space, and there is, as well as the onsite gardens and botched court, there are children's play areas with a playhouse, a compound playhouse, a natural play area, a play area called Talking Tubes in Tall Grass that's specifically geared for children. Obviously, children will be visiting Grandma and Grandpa in their new home in the future, should Grandma and Grandpa be living in this new home. And so we are very conscious of that and providing that kind of amenity for particular, for future residents. If I could, I would like to perhaps give these two sheets, we'll start with the section and then the elevations, to the planner to put up on the screen. Specifically along the west side of the site, the woman who wrote a, actually very eloquent letter, I thought, addressing her concerns viewing out over this particular property, she has a lovely situation right now where she views without any obstruction, well, I shouldn't say that, without any dwellings or building, given that it's a driving range. But there is along the whole west side of the property, an existing at least seven-meter-tall cedar hedge that pretty much obstructs the views from the ground floor levels right across there, and you can see it on the top section AA, right where you see the colored elevation in behind it, the large evergreen tree that represents the cedar hedge that exists on that site right now. And we meet that existing grade and have preserved that hedge. So it's staying, it's not coming out. The privacy will be retained on the west side of the property. In addition, we maintain the full 7.5-meter setback that's required per the zoning bylaw along that edge. So we keep distant from that edge, retain the hedge. You'll see that that particular dwelling unit is actually, appears as one story along that side, and if Mr. Planner could put up the other elevation there. That's that particular building on that edge, although it's a three-story building onsite facing into the site on the west elevation, you'll see a, it's got one-story portion and then a story and a half. So we've deliberately scaled down the buildings along the west edge of the site and indeed the north edge of the site to accommodate neighbors' views and interfaces and make sure we don't, well, so they retain their existing privacy and conditions there. The dwelling units that are on the north of the site are all, they're two stories. They're not three stories at all, and they, like this, they taper down towards the back. So again, we're very conscious and cognitive, and we maintain the full 7.5 setback on that edge to deal with the interface issues there. There is, I was, I do have my colleague here who can talk to a lot of the traffic issues that have been raised. As this has been developed to date, we are moving what the existing access from the southwest edge along Fraser Highway to the southeast edge, so it is farther away from 170th Street to indeed allow a deceleration lane essentially within the Fraser Highway corridor that allows in that temporary left turn in until this new connector road, as has been explained, to the east edge will come through in Phase Two, in the later phase of the project. That's kind of what I was prepared to address at this point in time, but I do have a...
Counselor Villanueva.
So do you have any projections on when Phase Two will be coming on board?
I do not. It has to do with when the adjacent property is at a point where they want to redevelop, but there is, when you look on the map on the screen right now, you can see that there's a, it's that long narrow strip between the CPG and RA. It's when that goes ahead, which we don't know at this time.
And so just for clarification on how these properties are going to be marketed, whether it's to seniors or whether it's to families? Because I don't believe legally there can be an age restriction.
Yes, no, we can't do that legally, right? I think because of the layout with the Masters on the Main, which is on over half of all of the units, that it will appeal to that kind of a resident, and that's probably who would end up buying that kind of place, right? But it's not, it's being targeted towards empty nesters, but we cannot prohibit someone who isn't an empty nester from purchasing.
So was there discussion with the school board at all about this project?
If, I mean, if something could be put on that, I don't think we would be adverse to that idea. You know, it can be done. With respect to school board, I don't know how they responded. I haven't seen...
That's okay. I might just ask planning if there was consultation with the school board on this project.
Yes, Madam Mayor, through you to Counselor Villanueva. Yes, the school board was a referral and they did not raise any concerns.
Okay, thank you. And I would be interested in your partner that can discuss the traffic issue.
For sure. The one last item I did want to add, it is, although it's a CD bylaw, it conforms with RM15 density. We are under 15 units per acre, which is the same as the existing townhouse across Fraser Highway on the south side. The reason it's CD is because there are some basement spaces that are above the existing grade, yet will end up below existing grade with the proposed grading within the site, and they have to be included as part of our areas. So instead of .6 floor area ratio, we end up at .68, but they will end up on those basement spaces. So it's more of a technicality on paper than the actual perceived as-built form.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Counselor Starchack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also have a traffic question, but first, there was a comment about habitat and was, so were there habitat considerations given to the development that's there with regards to nesting birds that are in the area and what may or may not be there?
On-site, there are, I believe, 13 trees right now, plus that entire hedge road. It was a golf driving range, so there's very little in the way of habitat other than grass. We will be providing in the development 348 new trees that aren't there now, well in excess of any replacement ratio. In terms of any runoff into lands below us, that will be stopped, it has to be. We would take care of our own drainage, et cetera. So I think we're adding actually to possible habitat.
Okay, and then with regards to parking, there is a comment made about, you know, guestimating 400 trips in and out of this, this complex. Is there a study that was done to explain what the previous land use was with regards to trips and what your trips would be?
I'm not aware of that. Perhaps James may know the answer to that. I will comment that these are all double garages, so there's plenty of, we don't have to do the tandem shuffle and all the problems that that starts bringing up, so there is a lot of parking provided onsite. As to how many come and go, I don't know if a parking study was specifically done for that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hayne.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I wonder if you could comment on whether or not the developer looked at the, the small piece of property immediately to the, to the north of the, of the subject property there as far as ingress and egress is concerned and what the status of that, if there was an attempt to, to consolidate that lot as well, or what the status of that lot now is?
I'm, I don't definitively know, but I'm pretty sure there was an attempt because obviously that is a much better route or access onto the site. That particular person is not willing to develop at this time or sell or become involved. But if you look at the onsite site plan, the way it's laid out, there is possible provision for a connection out to 80th Avenue. Perhaps if we could put the site plan up, that would help. We do have a little dog tail of a road that goes up to that edge, which isn't right where your finger was, right there, right, perfect, which is intended to possibly provide that future connection.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to Bylaw 7? I think there was a, good evening.
Hi, Diane Jarvis, and I live what would be across the street from this. And I think we're losing a little bit on track of the danger involved, of the traffic. There's only one way to go west from our complex, and there's one way to go east. And since we've moved into Vantage, which is on the golf course, I've often thought that the planning that went into that was suspect. We have to get onto 168 by, and there's a hill there, so you can't really see the cars. And when I look at what's proposed for here, it seems to me that this development shouldn't take place until the proper egress from it happens behind it. It's not safe on Fraser Highway. A speed limit, I think, is 70. People do 120 all the time. There's a steep grade there. It's truly dangerous when you are going to go east and you go from, I believe it's 170th, turning right. Also, the thought that you would accommodate for deceleration, the noise and the activity that happens from that is horrendous when you've got it as a community there, because the trucks gear down and they gear up, even from the light. The light at 168 and Fraser Highway is also dangerous, because you have a, when you're turning left going west, you've got a big turnaround to go, and you know that everyone goes through the caution lights, so you can't actually turn there. So it just seems to me that before this project goes ahead, that it really has to be dealt with, the safety issue of getting in and out. And when I heard that possibly it's for seniors, my goodness, it's scary, because just your reflex time, I'm a senior driver myself, and using that every day would be kind of scary. There were a lot of other issues with it as well, but I think the main one really is the safety on Fraser Highway. Fraser Highway, it's crazy there. All you'd have to do is to come around 168 there and just watch the cars go down the hill. I think you'd be seeing accidents. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Any other hands for speaking to this bylaw? Can I just see a show of hands?
Sorry, can I just come up one more time?
No.
No?
No.
I'm done? Okay.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, that's the process. You can whisper your question to somebody beside you and have them come up.
I already mentioned, I just wondered about sidewalks.
Oh, okay. We'll hear from you in the sort of mid-range there? Yes.
Hi, my name is Darlene Chek. I don't actually live in this neighborhood anymore. My parents do at 7787, 170th, Unit 87. Anyway, and I was not prepared for this either, so I've literally been full of pointing this. But I've grown up in this area, and I've been in the Port Kells Clayton region since 1969. And when I came back into the city five years ago, I was horrified at what had happened in the Clayton area. And I am really seeing the same thing happen here. This is all about developers and the infrastructure not being put in place. You know, I have to say thank you to Dr. Deckard and her letter, because I think it speaks to many voices in this room and many outside of this room as well, if they really knew what was going on here. The fact that a transportation study has not been completed, and it's, and really, this is in its current state, it just seems like there's very much, there's such poor planning. I have to speak to the no sidewalks. Fraser Highway is a super busy street. Way back in the day when people are turning left into that, or right even, into where that driving range was, it was always tricky. And that was 20 years ago, before we had all the activity that we do from Fleetwood, from the grocery stores, from all the great stuff that's going on over there. But they've had some planning. There's infrastructure that's in place. In this region, this has always been agricultural, all the way through to Port Kells and beyond. It is being developed at such a pace that the infrastructure is not being built in. You know, you go into the Clayton area, you can't even get a Wi-Fi signal or talk on your phone. The same thing is happening, it's, I'm not saying it's the same thing, it seems like it's the beginning of the same thing happening on this side of the hill. I'm concerned about the agricultural. You've got indigenous species in the Port Kells area, yes, there's drainage, but you know, how well has that been planned when you haven't even done a transportation study? Right? You know, you've got 400 vehicles. I'm a visitor into this area, and I know how bad it is. I drive through here constantly. And yes, it, maybe that section of Fraser Highway shouldn't be 70 kilometers anymore. You know, it is a residential area. It used to be a farming road that was a main artery. It's no longer that, no different than Number 10 has become something different. You know, yes, they're highways, but maybe those need to be looked at. I think, I would like to propose that in this property's, this development's current state, that it should be denied until infrastructure is put in place.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this? Yes, sir, please come forward. Yes.
Hi, my name is John, and my family is living in Windsor, 99278 Avenue. And I don't know, I'm not supposed to speak here or not, because we, our family, oh, today is on behalf of Chinese resident here that can't speak very good English. So a few days ago, when we saw this, we feel, whoa, it's coming again, even in Canada. When we come from China, in China, there's symbol, probably, I don't know if you know, if the government come to your door, your wall, handwriting, gone, and with a cycle, everything's gone, it's changed, you have no chance to repair, and it's something. We thought, okay, they're going to build this joint, they're going to build a west, east-west connector road in front of our house and apartment. So, well, that's if something happened. I'm so glad to now, to hear about, to be here, the resident have a chance to say their opinion, or we don't know if we have rights to say no for this development, and so on. But we are just so happy to have a chance to be sitting here, to say something about... Some of my friends, and even my family immigrate to this country more than 10 years, and we think it's something that's very beautiful, very valuable for this country. It's hundreds of things, many things, but we think it's very good for where we live in. Again, peace of mind, very beautiful, peaceful, and even have the eagle in 100 yards from us. I take this picture almost every day for this eagle, post down there, lad. And all my friends in China just think, you guys live in paradise. But from this showing, I can see, like a fist tool, everything's gone. And I come from a city in Beijing that's with eight, more than 800 years history. When we was kids, there's still a lot of green peace, and a lot of places we can go, and we can see a lot of small white animals. Right now, it's nothing, gone, all the concrete, all the big building, apartment. And I really don't win this happening around here. But I do understand that people, and those people may have the rights, I don't understand law here, but really, some most valuable life in Canada, it's going to be changing in this area, the eagle's going to gone, and the golf course disappear, and so on. Something really, I think, the government officer, please, you think about this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Okay. Anyone else after this gentleman? Okay, you, sir, will be the last speaker.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is James Pernew with McLeany Consulting, Unit 2300, 13450, 102 Avenue. I'm a senior planner and been working on this project, representing the proponents here this evening. Macie was kind enough to steer most of the notes in my, in my talking points, so I'll sort of pick through and try to respond to some of the comments and questions that came up. Before I get to responding to some of those comments, I just wanted to mention a few things about the project itself and some of the features and benefits, I think, that are there that maybe have not been covered to this point this evening. Overall, there's 98 units, which represents a density of about 14.2 units per acre, and I think it's important to sort of underline and highlight that. That is similar to the density of the townhouse development that is, currently exists on the south side of Fraser Highways. Putting that in context, 14.2 units per acre is somewhat lower than the densities you'll find further to the west on Fraser Highway, and certainly further to the east on Fraser Highway. We're complying with the RM15 zone in that regard. I think one of the key factors in considering this site for a multifamily development is the fact that Fraser Highway is designated as a frequent transit corridor, and it is also designated for future light rail. And there's anticipated to be a station located at 168 and Fraser Highway, which is about 400 meters, give or take, from, from this site. I would put forward that it, part of good planning is to, part of good planning practice is to situate higher densities such as this closer to such transit corridors as being planned on Fraser Highway. Looking at a lower density here, probably does a bit of a disservice to the viability of that transit system. A few of the key community benefits that I just wanted to underline, and I'll take a moment to talk about one in particular, is that the project, should it proceed, will provide for eight and a half meters, which is about just under 30 feet of additional road widening, which is essential to the performance and delivery of the LRT line on Fraser Highway. Secondly, the proposal would also be providing cash amenity contributions to the city to help fund other initiatives in the area. And then finally, I want to point out that this project, should it proceed, will be responsible for the design, construction, installation of a multi-use pathway, or a MUP as we call it in the practice, along the frontage of Fraser Highway, and will extend to the west, tying into a future walkway that will be aligned roughly with 170A Street further to the west. And that will provide pedestrian access that will get ultimately to 80th Avenue and the school, elementary school further to the north. It is a start, and I think the point that was raised earlier by one of the delegations is a valid one. Fraser Highway, particularly on the north side, has not been blessed with a great deal of pedestrian love, so to speak. What we're trying to do is try to redress that, at least in portion with this development. Certainly with the LRT project, a lot of those missing pieces, I would expect, would come into play when that is done. Turning to a number of the issues that were brought forward by various delegations this evening, and I want to thank people for, for coming here this evening. They spoke with a great deal of focus and passion, and it's good to see. So first off, site access. This has been raised a number of times. There's a lot of concerns with respect to the speed on Fraser Highway, particularly eastbound, and the difficulty in vehicles turning into 170th, trying to slow down, turn, make the right-hand turn, or people turning right eastbound down Fraser Highway. As was stated by the city engineer, there is an existing left-in turn bay, has been there for some years. There's also a second right-in, right-out further to the west in the site. The second right-in will, right-out will be deleted, leaving right-in, right-out, and a left-in turn bay that will remain for a relatively short period of time. This is an existing turn movement, it's been there, it served the Fraser driving range for some years. We did an analysis of the amount of tript generation during the, as traffic engineers talk about it, the PM peak hour, which is usually the most intense one. And based on this phase of development, we're anticipating approximately 35 PM vehicle movements per hour in the peak hour, whatever hour of the day that is in the afternoon. Assuming three-quarters of those vehicles are turning left, you would need about 25 meters of Q storage, which is approximately what's available right now in the temporary left-turn turn bay, so there is enough room to store it. The turn bay also serves as a, as a, as a deceleration lane. Having said all that, I think that point is moot, because with the LRT line proceeding, that turn movement will be eliminated by the City of Surrey. This is a fact well-known to us when we first put this application in. So any conflict between left-turn movements into the site and right-in, right-out on 170th on the south side of Fraser Highway will be separated by a median. So the sites will not interact with each other from a traffic point of view. In the long term, the plan is that a new north-south connector be established between Fraser Highway and ultimately to 80th Avenue, as was pointed out by, by the, the city engineer. As part of this development, we'll be dedicating a road roughly in the center of our site, perhaps if Mr. Planner can put a site plan up. And this dedicated road will run parallel north of Fraser Highway and provide for future access to the, as it's called on that drawing, the road reserve area. This will tee into Fraser Highway in the, I'd say, near term, depending on the, the development timing of the lands to the east. And that will provide access to Fraser Highway, whether it gets signalized in the future, will be a determination of the City of Surrey at a future time. But that will provide the, I guess, the official and dedicated and public access point for this site and the future sites to the east. Just a quick note, a comment was made about the potential loss of habitat for, for, for various, various creatures. There was a, an evaluation done at the very beginning of the project by a registered professional biologist. They went on the site, they looked for indications of species at risk or watercourses, they did not find anything, and that short report was furnished to the City of Surrey as part of our submission. As was indicated previously by, by Macie, the, the site is, is designed to appeal to more mature or empty nester demographic. Two-thirds of the, of the units will be a master-on-main style development. And unlike a lot of other more common tennis developments that we see, and I'm involved in a number of them as well throughout the lower mainland, this project will have double side-by-side garages, which is somewhat of a, a unique thing these days. Typically, you'll see a tandem arrangement that allows for the site to perform in terms of parking and coming and going a lot, a lot more efficiently and effectively. So last thing I'll round off with is, we did hold a public information meeting on February the 7th of this year. We sent out, I think, approximately 150 invitations. We had six people attend that meeting, and the six people that did attend were favorable towards the project. I'm encouraged by the level of passion and interest in this project at this point. And I hope that I've responded to some of those comments that have come forward. That does it for my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have with me.
You did just fine, Mr. Pernew. I don't see anyone, no questions asked, so thank you for the information on the transportation as well.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next bylaw, please.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 19320. The address is 15235 28th Avenue, DS 28th Avenue Capital Investments Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the... The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from single-family residential to neighborhood commercial. Applicants proposing to develop a single-tenant two-story office building with a pool and a pool house as a staff amenity in the rear of the property. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the front-side yard setbacks and allow up to 11 stairs within the building setback area to create an efficient site plan.
Thank you. I have 14 letters on table in support, five letters in opposition and this evening for persons not wishing to speak, we have 15 in support and one in opposition and wishing to speak, I have two speakers, one for, one against. Tony Webb, Tony Webb is up first. Good evening, sir.
Evening, Madam Mayor. If you can indulge me, I've got about four minutes of comments and then I have a couple of questions if that's okay?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tony Webb, I live at 15255 28th Avenue and I'm here with my wife Barbara today. We live right next door to the proposed project, so we're the most impacted by this issue. I'm here to try and save 28th Avenue and every other residential street in Surrey to stay residential. This is obviously a commercial project that wants to come in on our street here. I've sent everybody on council including the mayor an email and of some of my thoughts on this and I hope you got, had a chance to read that. I'm not sure how this office building is good for 28th Avenue, I can't see the benefit here. This is one of those applications that should have been rejected at planning stage. I'm wondering if the residents on 28th Avenue were ever considered here. Is Surrey so short of commercial property that we have to poach from the RF pool? I don't see it and I don't believe it. What I do see though, that it's cheaper to buy residential land, rezone it to commercial than it is to buy commercial land. It is likely going to double the value of this property just by the virtue of this RF to C5 conversion. This is what this application is about, this is not what Surrey should be about. Please put yourself in the shoes of every resident on this part of 28th Avenue. You wouldn't want commercial buildings forced on your street? Well, nor do we. Besides, there's a small strip mall at 28th Avenue and 152nd that fronts 152nd Street, that's where the entrance to the mall is, so 28th Avenue has already contributed its share to Surrey Commercial, so no more please. The proposal is not good for 28th Avenue or Surrey as a whole. If you let this go through, the potential for a flood of similar applications all over Surrey based on this precedent. If you let this developer get their way, every developer will want to double their investment and insist on the same treatment from planning and council and how can you say no to them when you've said yes to this project? If they don't get their way, you're going to expect them to challenge. Citizens of Surrey rely on planning and the planning department and council to protect us from applications like this. Please help us now and send a message to everyone in Surrey that you're committed to keep our residential zones residential. This kind of application is not welcome in Surrey or you could be fighting for your own street next. Please stop it now. Now, my wife and I are not against redevelopment on 28th Avenue, we have seen it go from half-acre lots to a high density of mixed family, mixed single-family and townhouses. In fact, there are two applications on our block right now, each wanting to replace one house with four houses and we're not objecting to those applications. Given the size of those lots, the lot in question could accommodate five, sorry, eight single-family homes. This kind of application would be more in keeping with the community plan, keep the lot in the RF family and meet with the King George Corridor Plan as to improving residential density to attract transit including light rail and/or Skytrain to the area. Along with a very generous tax revenue for the city, this is a much better fit for the property. C5 allows anything from retail to restaurants to neighborhood pubs, rec centers as well as the office space that's due to go there right now, to name but a few. So if this building ever gets sold, the residents of 28th Avenue may be faced with any types of these businesses replacing the office building, so some thought had to go, has to go to future use. The size is another issue, the proposed building size is 589 square meters. This exceeds the 370 square meters allowed under the C5 zoning. It should have been rejected on that alone. In fact, the fact that there's a swimming pool and a gym, pool house has also been added to this project indicates to me that this is more than just a nine-to-five office situation. By the way, there's no fence around the pool, it is situated a few feet from a low-income housing project where lots of children reside. The pool is a danger to those kids without a fence. So in closing, oh well, actually, across the street there are 18 townhomes that may have been pre-sold, they're not currently finished yet, but those 18 townhomes have not had the opportunity to voice their opinion on this matter, so that's another issue. And please, mayor and council, vote against this proposal, it's not good for the street, the community or the city, it only benefits the developers. Please keep it RF. Sometimes you have to say no to something that is not right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Webb, we had a question I believe.
Yes, I do, okay, so the main one, I do have a few, but the main one is the size. This is 1.6, the size that it should be, so it's adding 60%, I don't understand this. Can we get an answer?
Yes, could I get some clarification from the planner relative to the size of this as opposed to the zone?
Madam Mayor, the C5 zone allows individual businesses of up to 370 square meters within the building, so there could be multiple offices or businesses within there, but each one is restricted to a maximum of 370 square meters.
In this case, it's a single applicant with a single, single use? Does that change it?
Madam Mayor, the, although it's one applicant, the CD bylaw, the C5 zone would be regulating the property and as such they would have to conform to the maximum sizes permitted per businesses for that property.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, what was the answer there, Madam Mayor?
Could you, yes, could you repeat that, Mr. Planner?
The maximum sizes per business within that building would have to be 375 square meters.
Okay, but is this not a single applicant on a two-story building? That's what I understood this to be. In fact, the guy running the project has called me and told me that, so.
That is correct.
Yeah, so I don't understand then, why is there a discrepancy of 60% from the 370 to the, to the 5, what was it, 590?
Back to this planner.
Madam Mayor, basically, the building can be owned by one owner, but then if it's tenants, they are restricted to a maximum size within the footprint of the building.
But I think the question is that that, this application exceeds that size and how does that, how? Maybe they're including the pool as office space?
Within a building, there's a maximum space that can be allowed to one tenant or one use. The building can be larger than 375 square meter, but within the building, the subdivision within the building, the maximum can be 375 square meter per business.
Does that make sense to you? Do you understand that sir? The building can be larger?
I understand, I understand what he just said.
But the use, the single use can only be 370 meters, square meters?
Just one moment.
There can be unused space for potential other tenants?
Thank you. It says here, this is the C5 zone, it says here the following uses are permitted provided the gross floor area of each individual business does not exceed 370 square meters or 4,000 square feet. There's only one, there's only one applicant, so I've spoken to the applicant and he tells me he's moving his office there.
And he may have, he may, he is still allowed to make the building larger and not occupy that space?
Okay.
It could be for the future.
Fair enough, okay, okay. Okay, this, what community amenities or benefits are proposed in conjunction with the rezoning? I understand there's a sidewalk going in, but that's standard stuff, is there anything else that they're offering?
I wouldn't think so, but let me ask the planner, is there anything beyond the expectations that we would have of any commercial?
Madam Mayor, the property or the rezoning is in keeping with the official community plan, so there's no community benefit in that sense. There will be upgrades to the fronting roads that the engineer could highlight if necessary.
So not unlike that what you expect, Mr. Webb, the infrastructure surrounding the area?
Okay, all right. The modern design is more of a glazing type architecture, doesn't fit with the character of the new townhomes going in and also the adjacent C5-zoned property I mentioned on 152nd. So I just wonder how that, it's not, it doesn't fit with the community.
Mr. Planner, do you have a comment on that? I understand it's outside of the land use which we're considering, but.
Madam Mayor, the project was reviewed by the advisory design panel and it was supported by the panel.
Okay. Okay. So sorry, he did mention something about the community plan in the Sunnyside neighborhood, could he, could he clarify that? Because I'm just wondering if commercial was allowed on 28th in the community plan?
Madam Mayor, the property is designated urban in the official community plan, that allows a, the C5 zoning, the, at the local area plan, the secondary planning level, there is an amendment proposed to commercial.
Which is why it's before us tonight?
And there doesn't appear to be any traffic mitigation measures allowed on this project. There's no extra parking, they're relying on parking that's been put in place for the 125 townhouse units opposite and they're relying on use of that when it's actually being taken over by, it should be used by the townhouse project, so I don't see any on-street parking for their, their visitors to the, to the, to the site. They do have 13 parking spots for employees, but, but nothing on the road. I wonder if they can address that?
Madam Mayor, the, as the delegation mentioned, yes, there are 13 parking stalls provided, which again meets the requirement in the zoning bylaw for both the employees and visitors on-site.
For the 4,000 square foot unit, 13 stalls is expected to address both employees and visitors?
The 13 stalls are provided based on the entire size of the building.
On the size of the site, thank you. So it does meet the bylaws, sir?
Okay, fair enough, okay. The design book references 28 feet in height, the height maximum I know is 30 feet, I'm just wondering, is there confirmation that the applicant is maintaining the maximum height allowed? Because I didn't see it in the design book.
Madam Mayor, the height will have to meet the minimum requirement of 30 feet at the plan check stage if this was to be approved. If they did not, it would require a variance, would have to come back to council.
Okay, and just one other thing, there wasn't, a small thing, there wasn't any space on the plan as far as I could see where they were going to locate their garbage containers, so I'm not sure if that's just city pickup or is it container pickup?
Madam Mayor, the delegation perhaps can answer that question?
We'll make sure that that's addressed.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, for your comments. Next up I have Beverly Wilkie.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, my name is Beverly Wilkie and I recently moved into unit number five at 15268 28th Avenue, which is old school across the street. As a longtime Dawson and Sawyer employee and recent purchaser of one of our townhomes at 15268 28th Avenue, I would like to express to you the benefits this new office building will have in my life. With the office being located across the street from me, I will no longer need the use of my vehicle because I'll be able to live, work and play all in the same area, which is great city planning. This not only gets another vehicle off the road, but also saves me time and money at not having to be able to commute to work. It would be an amazing change in my life and I hope you support the project this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Come forward, sir. And bylaw seven, anyone after this gentleman? You sir will be the final speaker. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Ted Dawson with Dawson and Sawyer. I am the applicant and the owner of the property. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. The proposal in front of you holds significant meaning to me and our entire team, many of whom call Surrey home. Can we get the first slide up Ron? We are the developers of the townhome project directly across the street to the south from the proposal. When we purchased the subject property and began analyzing an appropriate land use with city staff, we learned that this property is located on the frequent transit network, is less than 50 meters from 152nd Street, has great transit access and is walking distance to every possible amenity. The site is directly adjacent another C5 commercial property to the west, a residential lot to the east and townhome uses to the north and the south. The property is surrounded by townhome or commercial uses on three sides. Because of the very close proximity to 152nd Street, if this property had been included with the original C5 property to the west when it, when it was redeveloped, this property would likely already be zoned C5. After careful consideration of this context, we became very excited about the idea of building a small state-of-the-art head office for our two Surrey-based businesses, our development company and our property management company, and believe this to be a very synergistic and complementary use to the area. The proposed use complies with the OCP, no OCP amendment is required. If you look at the aerial, you can see, that's up there, good, that this is intuitive and does not in any way set a future precedent for land use further away from 152nd Street. We are proud to be a Surrey-based business and almost our entire office lives and works in Surrey. While we have a small head office, we do create thousands of jobs of opportunity and economic activity every year in Surrey. An office in this location will assist us in continuing to attract a top talent for our two businesses and enable us to continue to create jobs and opportunity within the city. As mentioned, we have a very small head office of 10 employees if you include both companies, three of our employees have purchased homes that are project directly across the street and are excited about the prospect of walking to work. Two of them intend on selling their automobiles as they will have to have the ability to live, work, shop and play all in the same area. Ron, can you put up the next slide please? When contemplating the proposal, we really wanted to do something that was the antithesis of a typical office park where everyone drives a car to work, the buildings are cheaply constructed and disconnected from amenity. constructed and disconnected from amenities. We wanted to do something amazing, something awesome, and something that respected the land and the context of the area. To achieve this, we concluded we're going to do the following. Firstly, we said, "Let's significantly underbuild the property so it has amazing outdoor spaces and density that is more in keeping with a single-family residential use." In fact, the permitted square footage under the C5 zone would allow us to do 10,880 square feet of buildable square footage, and we're proposing almost half that at 5,800 square feet. And our building is only two stories in height. This is far less than what is permitted under the C5 zone and is even less than the density permitted if we were to build a brand-new, single-family home on the lot, which would permit a 7,500-square-foot home, including basement. If this lot was subdivided into two, it would permit 15,000 square feet of buildable area versus our proposed 5,800. Our proposal is also less in size than the neighboring, single-family house to the east. We are also proposing lot coverage that is less than half of what is permitted under the C5 zone and is also less than the lot coverage permitted in residential zones. We have retained mature trees, high-quality trees along the north and east property lines, and we're also proposing a large landscape buffer of mature plantings that will completely screen and block the interface for the properties to the east, and you can see that on the landscape plan up there. In addition, we are proposing a setback on the east property line that is over six times larger than the setback required under a residential zone. Secondly, we said, "Let's go all out on the design and do something special, something we in the city can be proud of and something that will be an amazing environment for our employees that includes stand-up workstations, exercise facilities, adaptable workspaces, and more." Thirdly, we said, "Let's be a company of the future and embed innovative green practices and elements into the design." The roof has been designed to permit solar panels, which will supply us with our power. The building will have a focus on having the best indoor air quality possible, which is a silent issue in many buildings. We will be roughing in all of our parking stalls for electric vehicle charging stations. Many of us already drive electric vehicles, and our goal is to have the entire office driving electric vehicles by 2022. With respect to the neighbor to the east who spoke earlier, last year we were in contact with the neighbor to the east and we were not aware of any concerns at that time. This May, pre-notification letters were sent out to the neighborhood regarding the proposal. City staff was only contacted by one person from those notification letters, which was the neighbor to the east. Since that time, we have tried to meet with the neighbor at their convenience and have reached out multiple times. Our requests to meet have gone unanswered, which is extremely disappointing. We have designed the building with the use of Clarestory windows and privacy screens on this east facade to add visual interest and light while ensuring maximum privacy for the neighboring property to the east. And as previously mentioned, we are proposing an expansive landscape buffer and setbacks on the east property line that are over six times larger than the setbacks required under a residential zone. We would welcome the opportunity to meet with the neighbor between third and fourth reading, and in addition to the landscape buffer, we would be happy to pay for some additional landscaping on the neighbor's property to enhance the interface even further. In addition, their property is still fully redevelopable into single-family lots, and this proposal does not affect their land use in any way. Having said all of this, there are a lot of supporters, many of whom have purchased homes directly across the street from the proposal who have come out tonight in support, and we thank them for this. In closing, we truly believe this will be a thoughtful and cool, albeit very small addition to office space in the city. We are very excited to be doing something innovative and job-promoting that also encourages walking, cycling, and transit over automobile use and creates a sustainable, energy-efficient building in keeping with the city of Surrey's progressive and forward-thinking views towards economic, social, and environmental sustainability. This is our most important project that has ever been before, Mayor and Council, because it's an investment in our future in Surrey. We are believers in Surrey and we would be very grateful for your support tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Dawson, could I ask you a question regarding the swimming pool and what we heard earlier?
Yes.
How would we make sure that young children from the units across the street from you and elsewhere in this neighborhood did not access your pool?
Yes. The property is completely fenced along the perimeter, and the pool area is also completely fenced internally.
Thank you. Counselor Villanueva?
Well, just after hearing your presentation, the reason I was worried about the zoning on this site is because people often rezone and then flip the property at a fairly good price. So I guess I would need a sense of confidence that it looks like you put a lot of money into this design, but that's not your plan.
Yeah, this is definitely not a moneymaker for us. In fact, it's the opposite of that. If we were going that route, we'd be trying to put as many townhomes on it as possible.
So I guess my other question is that there seems to be, and I'd be incorrect, but quite a bit of office space in the South Surrey-Morgan-Croydon area that's still for lease. And so, did you look at where office space is currently allowed to consider moving your offices?
Yeah, there is some office space available, but nothing that suited our needs and nothing that we could do that's unique like this. And we're really excited to be able to do something that is a little bit different and that goes way above and beyond on sustainability.
And so, we can be confident that you're going to put in the screening that's necessary to deal with the interface with the neighborhood?
Absolutely. And we're going to be planting mature evergreens that are going to be 16 feet at planting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next bylaw?
This is zoning amendment bylaw 19317. The addresses are 10918, 10932, 10944, and 10956 132nd Street. The applicant is 1058247 B.C., Limited. The applicant seeking to rezone the site from single-family residential to comprehensive development. The applicant is proposing to develop a five-story seniors' independent living apartment building with 117 rentals and strata units and a childcare center. Housing agreement is proposed to limit occupancy to residents 55 years of age or older and their spouses.
We have no correspondence on table relative to this bylaw, and we have no one signed up wishing to speak. I have one person in opposition not wishing to speak. Is there anyone wanting to speak to bylaw number eight on our agenda this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, sir, come forward.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening. Your name and address, please, for the clerk?
My name is Stan Van Tyn. I live at 10907 132nd Street, which would be directly across from this development. I have a few questions. First of all, the city has bought the lot 10906, I believe, to put a road in there, and I think it's got a lot to do with access for this building, which is, in my opinion, oversized and too tall. How tall is this building, actually?
Mr. Planner, do we have something on the height of the building? Put the project up.
It's five stories, but how many feet or meters?
Madam Mayor, the building height is 17 and 1/2 meters.
All right, well, here, we'll go back to the road now that's going to extend from 109. Apparently, the city's bought the property. They can build the road one block deep, because I'm not sure if they have the next property behind, which would be to the east. Now, do they own that property too, which may be 10907 132nd A? Or else next door, one of those?
Mr. Engineer, do you have the information on the roads in the area?
Madam Mayor?
Is this road going to go one deep only? Because my concern is, this lot that the city owns is worth over $1 million, and they're going to build up maybe 120-foot-long road, and they have invested a million in the property. If they buy the property behind it to put the road through to 132nd A, there's $2 million without even breaking ground. That seems like a lot of money to spend on a road and to help the access for this building. And another question I have is, they have the underground parking at the north end. Where would the loading bay be? Because I understand that they would provide meals in this place. Now, you've got to have a loading dock. Where's that going to be? According to the site, there's not a lot of loading docks in there. And where are they going to bring the trucks in to move people in and out? Is that going to be off 109? Because you can't have anything on 132nd. There's positively no parking on 132nd.
Well, let's just see if we can get some of those questions answered. Could we get the application layout put up, please, and have a better understanding of where the... Okay.
See, there's 109.
Now, where would you bring in, Mr. Planner? Where would supplies come in?
Madam Mayor, the...
Sorry?
Madam Mayor, the access to the underground parcade is off the lane.
The lane in the back?
Yeah. And that's where the garbage enclosures will be. They're all underground, and that's where most of the loading and unloading will be conducted.
Thank you.
So people that are moving in will go around the back through the lane and into the underground to bring their furniture and everything in?
Correct.
So then, I see on the front, you have a cutaway. Now, what's that cutaway for? Is that just for people to pull up and let people go in, or what's that all about?
The portico at the beginning?
Right where it says 132nd Street. Straight in from there, yeah.
I suspect it's a design in the entryway, but...
Is that where the main entrance way is going to be?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that is where the main entry will be, and it's a covered entry feature of the building.
So that's going to be a drop-off cutout there, kind of?
That's a...
Because 132nd's really a busy street. I mean, you know, people are complaining about busy streets. 132nd should never even be a truck route, which it is. Now, if you put 109 in there, you're probably going to have to put a light in there, and if you put a light in there, you're going to have to put a crosswalk, because there's a school on 109 one block away. Now you've got trucks coming up the hill, they're booting it, their engines are revving like crazy, they're going to see that light. If it goes yellow, they're going to run it, because they already run up to 108, and they'll blow right through that light. So, to me, really, to put another light there, you've got a light at 108, another light at 109, a busy street like that is going to be backed up down to the highway. And all the residents along that street, excuse me, are million-dollar-plus homes, and you're willing to sacrifice those taxpayers to build a big building like this that's quite oversized, five stories high? I would hope you have sprinklers in the attic, because when these things burn, if there's no sprinklers in the attic, they go down.
Of course.
And can the fire department get to the fifth floor, start dragging out these pensioners? They're all good questions.
Fire, certainly, sir. We would have fire...
I mean, I seen you on the telebridge there.
Yeah.
You fell down and hit your head. I hope you're all right, right?
Yeah. Well, we would have fire suppression on all of the floors and all of the rooms.
And the attic. Because when these places burn, it's always the attic. And why? Because they didn't have sprinklers in there.
Well, take that under advisement. I'm certain our fire department will make sure that on our seniors' facility, we're well...
But you think about that, putting a light at 109, you think how great that's going to be? Trucks are going to come up that hill, booting it. They have to stop there. The noise to all those houses is going to be unbelievable. Then they get to go one more block, they stop again. They're going through the gears. This is just, I think this would be much better if it was townhomes. So that's about all I got to say. Well, just wait a minute here, maybe I've got something more to say. I've got a few questions. Let me get my glasses here. The building, you know, it was a fake proposal when it first came out, like 10 years ago. They changed the building and it was going to be for students. Now it's going to be for old people. I guess they figure they can get people like...
Well, it's 117 rental units for seniors and a childcare center, so there will be both seniors and children.
So there'll be a lot of traffic, drop-offs, you know? That's about all I got to say. But I think it should be looked at. I mean, I know you develop, there's trees over there. Everybody bitches about trees. There's about 30 trees on that lot. They're not going to retain any of them. Some are 100 years old. By the way, I've lived in this house since in the 60s, and I've seen the road go from two lanes to cresting and dropping the elevation of the lots, and it goes on and on. It used to be an orchard. Now it's going to be a big cement square.
Seniors' property.
And my view and my sunrise, I figure my value will be at least 50 grand dropped for this development. Anyway, thanks for your...
Appreciate your comments.
...time, and I hope you feel better and stay off bridges, you know?
I may get a new bridge out of that. That was probably a good idea.
That is...
Thank you. Yes. Madam Clerk, bylaw number nine?
This is official community plan amendment bylaw 19324, land use contract 420, partial discharge bylaw 19325, and zoning amendment bylaw 19326. The addresses are 13540, 13586 98th Avenue. The applicant is Yana Holdings Incorporated. The applicant seeking to redesignate the site from Central Business District 3.5 FAR to Central Business District 5.5 FAR, which will increase the density on the site, discharge the land use contract number 420 from 13586 98th Avenue, and rezone the site from single-family residential and downtown commercial to comprehensive development. The applicant is proposing to develop a 30-story high-rise tower and a six-story podium consisting of 181 residential units, a four-story hotel with 112 hotel rooms, eight two-story townhouse units, and a ground-level retail commercial space.
We have no correspondence on table relative to this application, nor do I have anyone not wishing to speak. One person signed up for speaking to this in support, and that is Scott Brown.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Brown. I'm a resident of 1776 148 in Surrey. Also, I'm the president and chief executive officer of Fifth Avenue Marketing, which is a Surrey-based company. Tonight, I'll make my comments brief. What you'll call outside the door here, we have the, with the Surrey City Development and the vision for Surrey City Centre, Three Civic Plaza with its five-star hotel was, I believe, a critical factor in getting people to look at Surrey differently and promote development. The city's attitude towards encouraging innovative architecture has continued there and also been at King George Station. What we do find with that hotel opening, and now it's fully sold out from a residential perspective, is that that hotel will meet a certain type of business, traveler, and education-based customer, but there's a whole entire market segment that is being underserved. So with this new hotel at King George Station, this hotel will be three or four-star and allow for more economical hotel stays, will encourage people who are possibly staying at the hotel, visiting people who are ill. Our CNPE Division, other people from CRA who have a different expense account or budget, provide them with necessary housing. You can't have a downtown with only one hotel, so I think it's very exciting. In addition to it, I think that the architecture, and I think Surrey's becoming noted for that, the architecture and how the developer and the architect worked with the design panel to come up with something very striking and innovative will make a wonderful counterpoint to the southwest corner. Of course, to the immediate kitty corner to that will be PCI's development. And in addition to it, of course, you have King George Station and Concord. So I am in favor of this, both as a resident and as a businessperson. Thank you.
Thank you. It has some architectural interest, and we have some questions. Not so fast, sir. Not so fast, sir. Counselor Hain.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And you seem very familiar with the project. Are you just speaking as a resident on this project?
No, I'm speaking actually as a businessperson, working with the developer and a resident.
Working with the developer, good. So, my question then has to do with the amenities that go with the hotel. Would you characterize this, first of all, as a full-service hotel? And what other kinds of amenities would be included, i.e. meeting space, conference function rooms, that sort of thing that would go with the hotel?
Yeah, what you'd expect in a three- or four-star hotel. There is meeting space, conference room, et cetera, breakfast area. There, of course, is a swimming pool and those type of things. And the amenities will be somewhat shared by the residents as well, similar to how Three Civic Plaza has done that.
So, the... through you, Madam Mayor, the ballroom, will there be a ballroom? And what kind of capacity would that have for meeting functions?
I'd have to defer to a developer representative because I don't know the actual size of the ballroom.
Sure enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. We'll find out the size of that ballroom for you. Okay, Madam Clerk, bylaw number 10.
His zoning amendment bylaw 19327. The address is 11411 Bridgeview Drive. Applicant is CCB, the Realty Holding Corporation. The applicant seeking to amend comprehensive development bylaw 17422 in order to expand existing Central City Brewers and Distillers and develop a second building containing a warehouse and office space and private liquor store as a permitted use.
I have two letters on table in opposition to this bylaw, and I have one person signed up wishing to speak, Laura Jones. Laura?
Good evening. Laura Jones from Pacific Land Group. The address is 12992 76th Avenue. We are here tonight on behalf of our clients, Beta Enterprises. They are the property owners of 12788 King George. We would like to bring your attention to the concerns we have with the application before you tonight. The Central Brewery property was originally rezoned from IL to CD based on IL in 2012. While at the time, the IL zone permitted the brewery use, it did not permit the retail sales of products manufactured on-site. The rezoning intent at this time was to allow an accessory retail use that sold products manufactured on-site and was limited to only 2,000 square feet. The current rezoning is for an additional 8,850 square feet of retail sales area for a private liquor store. The existing retail space will remain, so there will be 10,000 square feet of retail liquor sales. This is no longer an accessory use. The Century Brewery site is designated industrial in the city of Surrey's official community plan and in Metro Vancouver's regional growth strategy. As we all know, industrial lands are in short supply in the region. The proposed additional 8,850 square feet of commercial retail use undermines the intent of the new liquor store or the intent of the designated industrial land use. Going to the council report, the referral section of it dated... of the council report dated July 10th has no mention of the Bridgeview Community Association or the RCMP. Both parties are typically considered when regarding... or when looking at a new liquor store application. Central Brewery has a restaurant and a private liquor store in the city center. There is the option for tourism efforts to be focused on these properties away from the industrial lands. The city of Surrey locational guidelines for private liquor stores clearly states that private liquor stores should not be located within 400 meters of a school, a public children's park, a public library, or a public recreational center. The proposed liquor store at 11411 Bridgeview Drive is adjacent to Bridgeview Elementary School. The school building is less than 100 meters away and shares the West property line. A typical provincial government liquor store is 5,000 square feet in size. The proposal before you tonight is double that and is going to be on prime or is proposed to be on prime industrial land. The proposed additional 8,850 square feet of liquor sales resulting in a total of over 10,000 square feet on industrial land, a budding Bridgeview Elementary School and Park, is contrary to the city's policies and bylaws. We ask council to consider this information and deny the application for a private liquor store at this location. If I may, I can offer my notes to the clerk for record.
All those in favor opposed, and that's Gary. Pass to the clerk.
Thank you.
And note, Counselor Hain.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a question for staff. Is... I'm just looking at my planning report, and a vast majority, it seems to me, of that phase-two increase in spaces for warehouse and office spaces, is it not? So, maybe staff could clarify how much spaces is actually retail?
Yes, Madam Mayor, through you to Counselor Hain. The building has 32,000 square feet of warehouse... excuse me, warehouse space, 10,000 square feet of ancillary office space for brewery staff, and 8,800 square feet of liquor retail space.
Okay, so it's an additional 8,800. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Woods.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Madam, you noted the fact that Central City is pub or brewery is close to an elementary school. And I don't... did you quote the distance it is?
So, the elementary school's on that lot that's...
I am looking at it right now on our...
Yeah, so it's... the building's less than 100 meters away.
I'll... okay. But you're not able to... when you say it's 100 meters away, you're talking about as the crow flies?
Yeah.
Because my recollection in that area, you would not be able to walk from the brewery to the school unless you walk a roundabout way. You wouldn't be able to walk in a straight line. Correct? You're nodding your head?
Yes, they... well, they share the property line. I don't know what the interface looks like, if there's a path or not.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I've got a couple of questions for the delegation. I just want to understand, do you currently represent any existing or future planned liquor stores in terms of your presentation today?
Yes, so we represent Beta Enterprises, which is proposing a liquor store at 12788 King George.
And if I may, when was that application put into City Hall?
That application was put in April 2015.
And was that application in prior to the application that we have before us today?
It was.
Question for you, in terms of the regulations that guide and provide guidance to municipalities, would your proposed site meet the current requirements in terms of location requirements from another liquor store?
The city's policies?
Both the city policy and the liquor policies, if that makes sense.
We meet the city's policies. If this liquor store is located at this location, we will be within 1,000... within one kilometer, and so we won't provincially be permitted.
So, I just wanted to better understand, and if staff can help me out on this, does this application restrict one to put another application in? Is that just guidance, or is that a hard rule? To planners.
Mr. Planner.
Madam Mayor, through you to Counselor Gill. The one-kilometer radius is a provincial requirement. I'm not certain whether or not that is a hard and fast rule or whether they can use some discretion on that.
Thank you.
I see no other questions. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw 10 this evening? Madam Clerk, bylaw 11, please.
His zoning amendment bylaw 1931. The address is 11067 157th Street. The applicants are Gary and Sharon Guz. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into six single-family lots.
One piece of correspondence on table relative to concerns around lot grading, and no one... one person signed up to speak to this bylaw. Gordon McKellar, speaking for the bylaw.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Mayor and Counsel. My question is mostly on the engineering. I live right next door, so my address is 11087 157th Street. And the road access coming from 110th, I believe it's coming from 110th, what happens when it gets to that lot? Because I don't believe the people behind have subdivided. Is there a drawing on this?
Can you help us out there, Mr. Planner? With the access and acres?
Okay. So, where the road ends, that's where my property starts. So, in future, when I subdivide, does the road go back in alignment? Or does it bend back before... or does it have to take more of my property?
Mr. Planner?
Because that's...
And sir, can you just point out your property where... on the map?
It's to the north. It's number... that's one, yeah.
That's it? Okay.
Yeah. You see how the road bends in? It doesn't... the road doesn't go straight. 156A does not go straight. And the reason it doesn't go straight is the people on, I guess it's Lot 33 there, they don't want to subdivide right now or give up their access, right? So, I believe what happened was the developer had to give up more of a road to make the road bigger.
Mr. Engineer?
Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, the 156A Street at 111th Avenue is already constructed on the west side, so the delegation's property, when he chooses to develop, will just be completing the balance of that road. There is a bit of a curvature in there, so the amount of dedication would vary, but he would just be completing what is remaining of that road portion.
Okay, so that the road then will basically dead-end at my property line, but it won't go... it won't go... like, when the new road goes in behind my property, it'll just get wider. Is that correct? Like, it doesn't take any of the property out, does it? Like, it doesn't take any of my property out?
Madam Mayor, there will not be any road construction on the delegation's property as a result of this application.
But when the delegation goes to develop, he would have a requirement to provide road...
Yeah, but it wouldn't line up with this existing road, though. It would line up with the older road, the old plan. Is that right?
Mr. Engineer, there would be an expectation that it will line up.
Madam Mayor, that's correct. There is applications to the south, just to the north of 110th Avenue, that will be dedicating road allowance as well as constructing the road. My understanding is that the developer of this site has been able to secure statutory right-of-way for the properties to the south of him in order to make the road construction work and provide road access.
Okay, and then, as far as the road, the houses themselves, are these basement homes? Are this suited? Or the...
All residential properties in the city are allowed to have suite.
Okay.
But I'm not... are they basement properties?
Yes, Madam Mayor, basements are proposed, but they'll be confirmed at the detailed engineering design stage, but they are proposed.
They are proposed, sir.
Okay, so what makes... is it the sewer elevation that the problem? Because I was wondering, is the sewer going to be low enough at that point to have a basement home? Or is it pumped? Is the storm and sanitary pumped?
Has the detail work been done on that, or would that come at the servicing agreement stage?
Madam Mayor, we'll certainly be going through the details when the design drawings are submitted, but based on the fact that the developer's engineer has indicated basements are possible, it's more likely that they're gravity sewers.
There will be gravity? Okay.
Did you hear that?
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if it was deep enough to do that. Okay.
There will be gravity.
Um, oh, and then, so the trees are between my property and the neighbors on the north side of the lot we're talking about. Because that road has going to be... have to be offset and widened, all those trees will be gone. Those... there's about 15 evergreen trees on the property line. So, I would imagine all those trees will come down because this road has to be shifted over another six meters?
Mr. Planner, can you define that, whether or not those trees can be saved?
Madam Mayor, there are trees along the north lot line that are proposed for removal, but there are also others that are on the neighbor's property to the north that are proposed for retention.
Well, there's not many trees left. If you go from the road allowance, that's... you're basically taking about 15 evergreens down, and that's all there is there. I don't know what are the trees you're talking about, but you would lose all the trees on the north... on the north side of that property. Anyway, that's a done deal, though, right? Like, I mean, that's what's going to happen.
Well, if they're in the roadway, that would happen.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And it looks like some... you could see there that some of them are very specifically in the roadway.
Right, and my point was, with the road offsetting over the way it is, you're actually taking an extra six meters, I think it is, which is an extra five or six trees that need to go if the road was going straight through. Anyway, that's all I have to...
Well, let's just... let's just see if that is the art of the possible.
Yeah.
Is that possible if we were to follow the curvature of the existing road, that we could save those? Mr. Who's got the bigger map of the transportation corridor there?
Madam Mayor, the 156A Street road allowance is intended to extend in a north-south orientation from 110th Avenue to 111th Avenue. And it does wiggle slightly based on the properties due to which properties have come in first and things like that. The trees in question appear to be well into the road allowance. We could take a look at it, but it's uncertain whether they could be saved with a small shift in the road.
So, it may not be possible relative to that extra piece you're talking about, sir?
All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw?
Deb Jack, Surrey Environmental Partners. Counselor, we call that I frequently speak to the matrix of the city, and I'm wondering in the first instance, is there any reason why city boulevard trees do not have a greater value affixed to their removal for development purposes than to those trees that are on private land? After all, the city buys those trees and maintains them for however long they're there on the boulevard, so they have indeed greater value to us beyond just their service because they're trees. There's no indication here, for example, how old those trees are.
No, we... I don't believe we'd put any greater value on those than we would on a private property.
Well, maybe that's something to consider, because as I look at this, I'm a bit perturbed. There's 19 trees on-site, and they're all going to be killed off, but then, out of eight boulevard trees, four are going to be killed off. And as far as I... And as far as I can see, they're not going to be able to be replaced. Otherwise, perhaps, there could have been an adjustment of the arrangement of each of the houses that are going to take out the trees. And then, of off-site trees, there's going to be seven killed of 21. But the question then remains, are those 14 trees that will be left, as far as this development is concerned, going to remain there in the future? Or will another development take them out? Because I'm wondering about the fashion in which these forms adequately and clearly address the issue of boulevard trees and off-site trees in terms of the forms that are used and the counting thereof. Because indeed, what we've got here is a development of six family lots, where indeed there are 19 trees on site. But in order for those six lots to go in, they're going to have to be 30 trees killed off. Which is a real loss to the matrix. So I, I appreciate some responses to the queries.
Well, in terms of the 30 trees, or in terms of the, should we consider greater value put on city trees or others?
Clearly, that's for future consideration, but I think we should consider it. There will, we only going to have four boulevard trees there, period. Because there is no room, as I can see, for any replacements.
Mr. Planner?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are eight boulevard trees along 157th Street fronting the site, according to the Arbor Street Report. Four of them are proposed to be removed in order to accommodate driveway construction on the proposed lots. We can certainly explore whether there's opportunities for additional boulevard tree planting along that 157th Street frontage.
And then there becomes the issue of, of the trees that are off-site, of the 14 trees that this report indicates will remain. Are they going to remain, or will they be in the future removed because of future development?
That's a difficult question to answer, because we can't, we have no control other, over future councils or future uses. We can only say that our requirement is for every tree you take out, you put in too. Or you give us cash.
Exactly. So the form is misleading, with respect, and should perhaps simply indicate that an additional seven trees off-site will have to be killed and don't address what's been remaining, because it's not necessarily going to be something that's going to continue into the future.
Fair enough.
And maybe we can tell you about valuing our boulevard trees more?
And I believe there was another gentleman. You, sir, yes.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Mike Comter, Hub Engineering. I'm the agent for this project. Address 1299276th Avenue. So maybe if Planner could put up the, the plan again with regards to the road configuration. So the city's long-term plan is to have 110th, or 156A Street connect 110th to 111th Avenue. The proponent with the application tonight also owns the property in the corner, which has received third reading. He's made arrangements with the neighbor, which is situated between him, which is the property to the south of this plan, to acquire right-of-ways from that property as well as the property to the west. The neighbor directly west of the property in question tonight is not in a position or situation where they wish to provide a right-of-way at this, at this time. So to accommodate the city's half-road standard, the road has a little bit of a jog in it, as has been noted. But it's not the ultimate section to the south. That property is, does not have plans to develop at this time, but is willing to provide the right-of-way at this time to provide access to the rear three lots. The question earlier about the trees, there are trees in the 156A Street alignment. Even if we push the road back to the shared alignment, those trees would still have to be removed. They're not situated in a situation where they would be retained in any, any configuration where we serve the road. It's just physically not possible. With regards to the, the other side, 157th Street, there are boulevard trees there. Unfortunately, when they were planted, they were planted in such a way that driveways are not attainable to the three lots, so some of those trees will have to be removed to accommodate driveways to 157th Street. The current road from 110th, back to 156A Street, the current proposed road will extend from 110th Street end at the north end that you see as a shaded portion of the road. To accommodate cars, there will be a temporary turnaround that will allow vehicles to turn around, garbage trucks, emergency vehicles, to be able to make their transition, so they come in, turn around. It's not shown on the plan, but there will be like a hammerhead turnaround within the property boundaries to allow vehicles, emergency, emergency vehicles to make the turnaround There are basement homes proposed here. The present property that I mentioned to the south at the corner, 110th and 157th Street, will be providing sewers, as well as the property to the west, which also has third reading. Those two properties will be accommodating the sewers at a depth that allows for gravity sewer connections. So there is no pumps proposed for these basements, so it's all gravity sewer connections. I think that's, that's the comments that I have. If there's any questions, we'd be pleased to answer them.
Okay, I don't see any, Mr. Comter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw 11? Last call. Madam Clerk, final bylaw, please.
Next bylaws are zoning amendment by law 19331 and zoning amendment by law 19332. The addresses are 10863 and 73160th Street and a portion of the lane. The applicant is 1049862 B.C. Limited and is seeking to rezone the site from one acre residential to comprehensive development and single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to develop two single-family lots and a surface parking lot that will provide parking for an existing adjacent commercial development.
Okay, we have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. One letter on table in opposition. Anyone wishing to speak to the last bylaw of the evening, number 12?
Deb Jack, last time. There are 66 trees on site, and 40 are going to be killed off, keeping 20. In, my concern here is what they're going to replace them with. It appears from the report that there's only going to be conifers planted, I mean deciduous planted with no conifers, which is going to make things look pretty bleak in the winter. And I note that there's going to be a 10-foot landscape buffer on all sides. And I would hope, and perhaps this could be considered to be a requirement of buffers, they include deciduous conifers and broadleaf evergreens, which is evergreen shrubs. Because I've noted that there are some buffers that seem to show that they're just going to be deciduous trees. It would be nice if we had a policy of the city to have those variety of the three. Additional ones, of course, but that that become a standard. That way, there would be habitat that would last for critters that require it, particularly birds, clearly, throughout the year.
What was the, I'm sorry, Deb, that just the, it was deciduous and broadleaf?
My reading of the report indicated that there were going to be no conifers to replace the trees on this site. So I'm saying that they may like to consider in some areas some conifers, otherwise the site's going to look pretty bleak in the wintertime. And then the issue of, maybe we could establish some standards for these buffers.
Good comment, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda. Moving on to committee reports.
Move, Mr. Speaker, receiving SUIC. The first...
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
I'll move the minutes of the Public Art Advisory Committee, June 1st.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
I'll move the recommendations to be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And I'll move the recommendations to be adopted.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes to be received, the Parks, Rec and Sport Tourism Committee meeting of June 21st.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
Move recommendations to be adopted.
In favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes to be received, the Parks, Rec and Sport Tourism Committee meeting of June 21st.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
And move the recommendations of the naming of the Clayton Community Center.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes to be received, Audit Committee, July 17. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move recommendations to be adopted. Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
Move Board of Variants, June 14th.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes of the Heritage Advisory Commission, June 28.
In favor, opposed, carried. Two proclamations this evening. World Hepatitis Day, July 28, whereas it is estimated that over 500 million people worldwide are living with chronic hepatitis B and C, including approximately 60,000 to 80,000 people in B.C. with hep B and similar figures, if not greater, for hep C. And whereas hepatitis viruses can cause inflammation of the liver and chronic viral hepatitis, infection can lead to cirrhosis and/or liver cancer. And whereas many of those living with either hep B or C are currently unaware of their illness, as both can be asymptomatic for decades after initial, initial infection. And whereas community-based organizations, such as the Hep C Education and Prevention Society, health professionals and government partners in Surrey and B.C., continue to work on preventing new infections and ensuring that support for those infected by viral hepatitis is accessible. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare July 28 as World Hepatitis Day in the city of Surrey. CIBC's Run for the Cure Paint Canada Pink Week of August 14 through 20. Whereas Paint Canada Pink Week occurs 50 days prior to the CIBC Run for the Cure. And whereas the CIBC Run for the Cure is the largest, single-day, volunteer-led event in Canada, raising funds to support breast cancer research, education and awareness with the goal of creating a future without breast cancer. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare the week of August 14 through 20 as CIBC Run for the Cure Paint Canada Pink Week in the city of Surrey. And I urge all citizens to support the search for a cure and assist those individuals and family who deal with this devastating illness on a daily basis. Moving on to corporate reports.
Move corporate part R153, the amendments to the Surrey Secondhand Dealers' Pawnbrokers' bylaw, and that's to strengthen the oversight. Second.
Counselor Starcheck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I really support everything that's inside of here, but what I, I'm not seeing, and I just wanted to ask the question, was there is a list of, a laundry list of fines that are there, but is there something, mechanisms that are in place that when you maybe are not as compliant as what you are for a number of times, that the ability to provide that business to, to the citizens of Surrey is, is no longer here?
Madam Mayor, the provisions, if they do not pay the fines, if I understand your question correctly, will be, next step will be legal action to ensure that they're either get the appropriate court order to have them in compliance or to shut down the license of business. For future licenses as well, too.
Follow-up, counsel?
Yeah, yeah, not, not so much as, as they're not paying the fines, but rather that they're not being compliant, that they haven't done the, the set of due diligence that's required to specifically, you know, reporting their goods in a, in a timely manner with the web base that's there. So if we find out that they're, they're not compliant, rather than issuing fines on a regular basis, do we have the ability inside of this corporate reporter, inside of the bylaw, to actually rescind a business license?
Madam Mayor, yes, we will be doing annual reviews with, with all the stuff that you asked about, the questions, and once those reviews are done, as for the renewal process, we'll look at that there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll call a question. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R154, the increase of taxi licenses by 15 caps from 388 to 403 caps.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R155, city actions to address parking concerns in East Clayton, and that's to enhance the bylaw enforcement to eliminate the legal multiple suites.
Second.
All those in favor. Counselor Starcheck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know, I know this has been a long night, but I know this has also been a request that, that has come from counsel to take a look at the past actions of, of what has or has not worked and to move forward. And I think it's a, it's a comprehensive plan to take a look at the current enforcement rules that we have today, with the idea that we will be able to actually solve the problem in this manner, rather than other ways that have been suggested by the public.
Counselor Villanueva?
I just appreciated the report and the sensitivity in the report, that as we make changes and notify owners that they're not allowed more than one secondary suite, that we give tenants enough notice to find other accommodation. But I do think it's been an issue for a long time in the community, and I'm a terrific supporter of the need for affordable housing, but not at the expense of quality life in the neighborhood. So I think this is a step in the right direction, and I think people in the community are aware of the issue. And as homeowners, we'll, we'll see that there's a process in place so they can make adjustments on, on their incomes.
Thank you. In favor? In opposition? Let's carry.
Move corporate part R156, award of contract for Pacific Plaza Lane and 103 Avenue Resurfacing to Lafarge Canada in the amount of $474,023.55.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R157, Surrey Newton-Gilford Light Rail Transit Early Works Agreement.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R158, the servicing agreement with SEMI Amo First Nations.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Move corporate part R159, approval of sale of closed portions of road allowances adjacent to 16156 112th Avenue.
Second.
In favor? In opposition? Let's carry.
Move corporate part R160, extension of sole deposition permit for the property at 14933 Colebrook Road.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Part R161 was dealt with earlier, so move corporate part 162, acquisition of properties at 7414 194th Street in the amount of $2,270,917.50.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R163, quarterly financials for the second quarter of 2017.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R164, sponsorship request to the Crescent Beach Concorde's De-Elegance 2017 event in the amount of $2,000.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R165, electronic communication policy, which has been updated since 1999, so well done, staff.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R166, the recommendations for the Port Kells Community Hall Public Art Project, the mosaic proposal on the north facade.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R167, the community fund grant, the community grant funding, additional grant for the Surrey Urban Farmers Market in the amount of $2,000. Second.
In favor? Opposition? Carried.
Move corporate part R168, move the supplemental funding request for the 2017 Cultural Grants Program totaling $14,549.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R169, the Community Enhancement Partnership Program Grant Applications, the Gratitude Garden Project in the amount of $3,000.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R170, the Community Enhancement Partnership Program Grant Application for the Spirit Garden Irrigation Project in the amount of $2,900. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate part R171, the South Campbell Heights Land Use Plan. Second.
All those in, counselor? Counselor Villanueva?
Thank you. This is the South Campbell Heights Land Use Plan that was done in a fairly highly sensitive environmental area with a broad range of stakeholders and people that had interest in the area in South Campbell Heights. So I know that... environmental area with a broad range of stakeholders and people that had interest in the area in South Campbell Heights. So I know that it has taken a lot of time, with people have volunteered hours to ensure that this plan was done to preserve the environment in the most sensitive way possible, and I just want to thank our environmental partners and the developed community and landowners in this area that participated, because it was a long process, but also particularly Don Limas, because I think he was key in continuing working with the stakeholders and actually bringing this great plan to fruition. So I have not heard anything negative about the land use plan, which is unusual in this day and age, so I think staff and the stakeholders can be congratulated for that work.
It was indeed a late exercise, but I think we ended up with a good product. Thank you, Counselor. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R172, application for funding from the Federation of Canadian Municipals towards Clayton Community Center.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R173, the delegation of authority for the award of construction contract for the Surrey Museum Expansion Project.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. The federal government has generously contributed to that project, so I think we need to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Move corporate report R174, update on the Surrey Local Immigration Partnership for 2016-17.
I'll second.
One seven three.
Second.
Madam, I'll go to that button tonight. Madam Mayor and Counselor, I just, this is the update on the Surrey Local Immigrant Partnership progress and reports that have been done, and this is a table of people that are working hard to ensure that our new immigrants and refugees are welcomed in the city and have an opportunity to find good housing, education and employment. And I will say, the quality of work by staff on this project has been incredible, and the two reports with solid recommendations on what we can achieve is really workable, and there's a commitment by people around the table. We also have an immigrant advisory table made up of 14 people from different cultures who are actively involved with the table, and we'll be putting together a youth advisory committee as well this year. So this has been a federally funded project that has been of great benefit to our city. I think we're the only city that has both an immigrant strategy and a refugee strategy now in place, and Ogul, Olga, Shabina and Eileen Murphy have been key players on this initiative, and I co-chair the committee with Anita Huberman, who's the Chair of the Surrey Board of Trade, and they're diligently working to try and connect new immigrants and refugees with employers in our city. So I just encourage people to look at the work that's been done on this initiative, to know that we're taking our responsibility as a city seriously to ensure that everyone moving here can be a productive member, and the social service organizations in the city have gone far and beyond what their capacity is to ensure that people are settling well, but we still need to play a strong advocacy role to get more funding in the city to deal with English as a second language and further help and community supports, and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you for that, Counselor, and for acknowledging all of the good work of the service agencies, because I think they've done a yeoman's job when you look at how many refugees we have welcomed to our city in comparison to other communities in British Columbia, and I don't think there could have been a better example of that welcoming environment than the most recent Fusion Festival over the weekend, where we saw 100,000 people acknowledging in so many ways the diverse culture of our community and celebrating it. So thank you for that. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate.
Seconder, on table.
The Cloverdale report. They couldn't hear you, Tom.
175, the Cloverdale slope request for zoning changes.
I believe it's 175 with the new numbers.
It's 175, sorry.
Yes. And who seconded? Do I have it on the floor with the seconder?
I'll second.
Thank you. Counselor Woods.
Okay, we're speaking about, and there is new numbering, R175, correct?
Correct, with the new number.
Right. Cloverdale slope.
Correct.
Madam Mayor, I have to say that I've really struggled with this. I've had a number of emails from longtime Cloverdale residents that are in that area, and they are making some compelling arguments as to why this report should be rejected. I don't usually go against staff, but I just find here that, in this instance here, and it's identified in the paragraph at the very end, well, there's no defined threshold for a level of support to justify a rezone, and that is the one thing that I find very confusing, is that it's basically each application is looked at on its own merit, and it would assist me if there was, in fact, some level that we're going to say, look, if you get 75% of the people in the area, you can rezone. So in this particular time, I'm not going to support this report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Gill.
Thank you, Madam. Madam Mayor, in this particular scenario, I am going to be supporting the recommendations from staff, but that being said, Madam Mayor, in our last council meeting, we had a similar request from a similar neighborhood, but I think the real issue that we're dealing with is really how you define the boundaries, and within those boundaries, how you define what process we as staff would like, sorry, what process we would like staff to engage the community. I know that we have a local area service plan. I believe that it's almost 60% of the residents that need to own 50% of the properties, or in some context, but certainly I think that, given the number of requests that we've had of a similar nature, I really think it would be wise for council to direct staff to look at a policy and how that policy would fit within a community, and how we would define the boundaries for any particular area that would be making a similar request in the future.
Counselor, Counselor Hayne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I won't be supporting the recommendation as it is By any way that you look at the numbers coming back in, there's certainly a majority of residents, albeit a slim majority, that want to downzone in that area, and when we talk about affordable housing and you talk about, and of course, affordable single-family and using all those words in the same sentence is really a struggle today, but I think of, for instance, Cowtown in Cloverdale is another example, where you do have the older, you do have the older ranchers on larger lots and so on, and it is, in the single-family zone, that entryway into the market, the step past a townhouse or something, if you want to get into that single-family market. So I won't be supporting this at this time, although I certainly would support a referral if that were to come up, but I'm not supporting the application the way it stands. Thank you.
Counselor Starcheck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I take a look at the report and I make comparisons, there was another neighborhood that received a positive report on 57%, that were positive, and we seem to be holding on to the amount of negative responses, but if I take a look at that same one where there was less support, there was, you know, 28% of the lots didn't return it, and 22 or 15% were not in favor of it, so when I start doing the math that's on there, it's a very similar one that was there. So with regards to whether I support it or don't support it, I just don't support the math that's there. At the same time, I do support what Counselor Gill has said, and said that we are in dire need, I think, of a policy that clearly shows it, and the one thing that's unfortunate with this one is that the area of concern was not exactly what you call contiguous in any way, shape or form. It was, I don't even know what kind of a polygon it was. It was all over the map. So I think that we need to take a look at these areas in a more, you know, square manner.
Thank you. Counselor Villanov.
I should probably know this, but I'm trying to remember whether this rezoning would go through a public hearing. If the neighborhood was requesting rezoning, it does have to go through a public hearing, isn't that correct? So we could actually hear from the neighborhood to specifically add a public hearing if we supported looking at rezoning? Is that correct? Then I have the same concern about the 57%, because that was pretty similar to what occurred in Ocean Park, and as we recall, one neighborhood supported the downzoning and one neighborhood didn't, but I think that people should have an opportunity, people should have an opportunity to speak to it at a public hearing.
Counselor Steele.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't repeat all that's been said, but I do have a problem with the numbers, and certainly it seems more are in favor than opposed to it. Having said that, I too agree that we should be looking at some sort of standard or standards of approach for this, and this is kind of willy-nilly with different communities coming forth, so I will not be supporting this application at this point in time.
Thank you. It's very difficult when the ratio of support and opposition is so very, very close, and you're dealing with people's properties, so it's not simple, and I don't think when you've got something as close as 57 in support, it's, that's a tough one. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the...
Counselor Frank.
Oh, Counselor Frank, sorry.
Quietly sitting here. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a lot to add, although I would say that because it is so close, I think a public hearing would be in order, and I would just want to confirm that voting in favor of this corporate report, all it means is that it would go to public hearing, and no, okay, great, thanks.
That isn't what it means.
Okay.
It wouldn't go to, yeah. So I'll call the question. All those in favor of the corporate report? All those opposed? That fails. Okay, moving on, R176.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I believe it'd be appropriate to ask the staff. Direction on what the next steps would be, given the failure of the corporate report.
I thought perhaps we might want to have a bit of a workshop on where we've come from, how many we've done, what those percentages looked like, how did we define those boundaries, what direction we could give relative to policy, if that satisfies counsel.
I could make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, sure.
So be it.
So be it. All that I said.
So seconded.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Excellent.
Sufficient.
I'll move corporate report R176, updates and minor amendments to the city center plan.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R177, funding request for Egg Week Pie in the Plaza in the amount of $30,000.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Business arising?
Under H1, Madam Mayor, under the zoning bylaw, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Close because of the slow situation.
Okay.
Also on H1, Madam Mayor, move that council's portations of DVP 7917010700 upon final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed.
Opposed.
Carried.
On 2, under the land use contract is tried, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on 2, on the zoning, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And finally on 2, move that council's portations of DVP 7906012100 upon the final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
On 3, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 4, move third.
Second.
In favor, opposed.
Opposed, Madam Mayor, schools.
Carried.
On 5, move third.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
On 6, Madam Mayor, on the OCP, move third.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on 6, on the zoning, move third.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
And finally on 6.
I've got one before we get to that second zoning bylaw. Counselor Hayne.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and there was a lot of talk tonight about the safety in the ingress and egress on Fraser Highway, and while I'll be supporting this land use, because I believe that that land use is very appropriate in that area, I'm a bit surprised that transportation study has not been conducted, and I would ask that before the final is given, that engineering staff take a good look at the estimated vehicle traffic in and out of that complex, and look for the safest way to make that occur, because I do, and I'm sure we all, travel Fraser Highway on a relatively regular basis, going up or down that hill, past Surrey Golf Course, and the speeds really do get up there at times, and so I appreciate some of the delegations tonight with their significant concerns about the safety coming in and out of that property.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor. I think we should also acknowledge that as a future light rail corridor, there would be some expectation of densification around that area, and it seems fitting, so we should include that in our understanding of the transportation elements in there for access and egress to densification as those applications come forward. Counselor Starcheck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and while I would support the land use that's there, just to add on to Counselor Haynes, with regarding to that connector road that comes south of Fraser Highway through the AOR into that area that was there, was a fairly significant item for those people that were living on that side, and so while we're doing that part of the study, if we can just really take a good look at how necessary that part is to be able to go through the AOR property to kind of separate the things that are there.
Okay, Counsel, I'm on second zoning.
On second zoning, Madam Mayor, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 7, Madam Mayor, on the zoning, move third.
Second.
All those in... Okay, it's on the table, Counselor.
I'll just be quick, because I actually didn't support this project to go to public hearing. I was concerned about the commercial zoning on 28th Avenue, but tonight, I think it was clarified for me that it wasn't just an exercise in rezoning property and selling that property, that it was actually for an office use that's going to be stable and enhance the city, and that because it fits in with the OCP and appropriate transition from the commercial, the scale looked good and the design. I'm going to support it tonight, but with the hope that the kind of landscaping that they're proposing and their diligence to keep up communication with the neighbor that has so many concerns remains in place, so I will be supporting it because of that.
Thanks, Counselor. Yes, encourage the neighbor to connect. Counselor Hayne.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and I too did not support this at first and second reading, but knew that it would be, in all likelihood, coming to public hearing, and we had that tonight, and I certainly appreciate the delegation that came out and the neighbor that came out and spoke against this proposal. My understanding, or my misunderstanding of the proposal at first and second was I thought that it would be a facility with a lot of clients coming in and out and that sort of thing, and that doesn't appear to be the case. In fact, three of the employees for this are going to live right across the street in the townhouse complex that this developer created, so I'm going to be supporting it tonight, because I would have expected at public hearing, should there have been significant opposition, that we would have seen it tonight, and that wasn't the case.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Woods.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I also did not support this at first and second, however, this is not a normal application. Having met with the applicant, I've been convinced that it's a good quality application. I like the fact that it's going to more fit in with the community, and I like the landscaping that's being done. Mr. Webb, he made quite a compassionate plea, and I have corresponded with him. I would encourage him very much to start working with these individuals, and I think that in the end, everybody can be happy. I'm hoping that.
Thanks, Counselor.
I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm calling the question on third. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on 7, move that council's portations of DVP 7917008200 upon final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on 8.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 9, on the OCP, move third.
Second. Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
Also on 9, on the land use contract, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And finally on the zoning, move third.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
On 10, on the zoning, move third.
Second.
In favor, opposed?
Opposed.
Carried.
I'm opposed as well.
Also on 10, Madam Mayor, move that council's portations of DVP 7916066800 upon final adoption of related bylaw.
Second.
In favor? Councillor Starck speaking to that?
Yes, it was just a, maybe just a quick question, Madam Mayor, with regards to the purpose has already been there since 2012, April of 2012, that that was permitted use. My question is, does the increases in size change any of that that's around there with regards to relativity to the school or other things that are there?
Madam Mayor, in reply to councillor Starck's question, there was a parking variance approved by council for the existing brewery building. This secondary variance doesn't change any of that parking, this only applies to the new building.
Okay.
Councillor Woods.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for staff. We had a lady get up and represent the...
Turf.
Land opener at King George and 128, I believe. Is there anything to stop that company that she was representing to bring forth an application for a liquor store in that location? Should this be approved? Should this one be approved?
Madam Mayor, through you to councillor Woods. No, there would be nothing that would preclude the applicant from submitting an application. Now, whether or not LCLB would approve the location, given the proximity to this liquor store should it be put into operation, that's uncertain.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And Madam Mayor, the reason why I ask that question is that we in Surrey have many liquor stores that are within one kilometer of each other.
Definitely.
So, but that's a variable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's not an unusual phenomenon. Councillor Villanueva.
Just a quick comment. I just, I'm not supporting it just out of point of principle because of the aisle zone and the introduction of retail in that zone. I just watched what happened, to be honest, on 128th and 132nd when we had the industrial and the warehousing and how that emerged into much more creative retail districts. And I don't want that to happen in our current aisle zones because that land and that zoning is fairly precious in the metro Vancouver area. And I think Central City does a great job and they have a great restaurant and a liquor store next to them in the shopping center here in the Civic Plaza. I think that is the kind of support that is available to them and I don't think it's necessary on this particular site.
Call the question. All those in favor, opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Thank you.
On 11, Madam Mayor, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 12, on the zoning, move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on 12, on the second zoning, move third.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
On 13, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7913021301.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
On 14, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917027500.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
On 15, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917026900.
Second.
Opposed, or in favor rather, opposed, carried.
On 16, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917011400.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 17, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917021700.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
On 18, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917020400.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
On 19, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917023300.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
On 20, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 791702700.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
On 21, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute TUP 7917017300.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
On 22, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to issue liquor license amendment 7916064500.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
On 23, move that council's portations of DVP number 79160644. If supported, DVP will be brought forward for issuance of that execution in conjunction with final approval of the associated DP 7916064400.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 24, move that council's portations of DVP 79160362.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on 25, on the Surrey officer indemnification by law.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on 26, on the delegation by law.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on 27, which is the purchase and expenditure by law.
Second.
In favor, opposed, carried.
On 28, on the Surrey closing, move dedication of highway portion of road, move first.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Second.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
On 29, on the local area service road opening, move first.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
On the city of Surrey Vehicle for Hire by law, move first.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
On the Surrey secondhand dealers and pawn brokers by law, move first.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
On the Surrey municipal ticket information utilization by law, move first.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Following on 33, on the Surrey removal of reservation or portion of Hawthorn Park by law, move first.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
Favor, opposed, carried. Delegation requests. First one, CIC.
Just move that we hear them at CIC.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Madam Mayor. With respect to number 1B...
Could you push, so I can activate your mic councillor?
I'm trying, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Woods.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to I 1B, I'm going to suggest, Madam Mayor, that this matter should be referred to the Heritage Advisory Commission so that the board has the opportunity to provide counsel with their input and recommendation. And I think that this would allow the matter to be moved to council with some staff background information. So I think that that's where the delegation should go first.
Could you make that recommendation?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
2A?
I'll make 2A.
I'll second it.